All right, well, here we are on what is usually the last day of February, but this year it is, it is not. Tomorrow is, so leap year, there you go. But we are fortunate to be celebrating Black History Month here in Austin, and here in the United States. And we are really, really excited to honor our, we have Ms. Carolyn Black, Ms. Emily Schrock, Ms. Helen Tinch-Williams, Mr. Kenneth Lacour, as well as past and current Board Trustees. And we have a committee who is, has been working very hard on selecting these awardees, learning all about them and the wonderful contributions that they have made here in Austin. And I'm going to go ahead and I'm going to turn it over to them because I know we have a wonderful, joyous presentation tonight.
All right, good evening, everybody, and thank you for coming out in celebration of our annual award ceremony in honor of Hester Bateman Spencer Heinz. The award was established in 2021 to recognize individuals in our community that have contributed immensely and also in tandem with the Austin School District. I am pleased that Ms. Bateman Spencer Heinz's daughter is with us tonight, Beverly, so thank you for coming out. The award is named in, the award is named in her mother's honor, and her mother being the first recipient of the award. Thank you. So just a brief background, for those who don't already know, I feel it's, you know, behooves us to always open up and remind everybody the whole point of this ceremony and this individual who gave immensely to this district. It has made, it has made great strides here in the district. And as always, we want to honor our past Board of Education Trustees as well, our Black past Board of Education Trustees, starting with Cadoza Worthy, who we did honor last year with an award and presented to his family. We have Marilyn Thornton Tribble, Thomas Knight, Shondi Speller, Charles Cooks, Diana Lemon, current Board of Education Trustees, yours truly, Melissa Banter. And just a brief overview of some of our past recipients. Francine Vernon as well was honored that first year. Very, a pillar of our community and very honored, we were able to honor her. And last year, we had Jean Lorraine Ackerman Boswell, very well-known educator here in And as I said, we honored Cadoza Worthy as well and his immense strides that he made as a Board Trustee. We also recognized Ulrich Watson, who works with attendants, but that's an understatement because he makes such great connections to our students at the high school and really does make impact on students' lives every day. All right, so we're going to start honoring our honorees tonight, and again, thank you everybody for coming out.
So I get the privilege of talking to you a little bit about Carolyn Black, and so I am going to go through each one of these things because there's such an extensive list of accomplishments to talk about. But Carolyn received her bachelor's degree from the University of North Carolina at Greensboro, North Carolina. She earned her master's degree from Teachers College, Columbia University, in music performance. She was active in the Austin Women's Club and hosted a concert with the Austin High School Acapella Choir. She was the recipient of the Human Relations Award presented to her by the Westchester Chapter of the National Conference for Community and Justice in 1999, an award given to students and teachers who raised the level of awareness related to cultural bias in promoting social change. Ms. Black has been music director at St. Paul's on the Hill in Austin for 30 years. She was the founder of St. Paul's Youth Music After School Program and Summer Music Camp, and she was one of 10 African-American women to integrate the University of North Carolina at Greensboro. Ms. Black taught choral music and theater arts at Austin High School for 27 years, and she continues to impact the children of our community as the music director of St. Paul's on the Hill, and continues to run the after-school program for the, for students aged for 14, four through 17 years. Carolyn's been a tremendous asset in our community, and we're just so grateful that you're here tonight with your husband Art, so thank you. So Carolyn, if you'd like to come up, maybe you can come up.
Wow. Thank you so very much for this honor. I am in awe of the fact that I've been chosen for something so wonderful. I somehow or another am at a loss for words. My daughter told me, "Go get your hair done." And use your cane so that you don't fall down again. And for those of you who don't know, I had almost every part of my body replaced, and I just had my hip replaced. So it's been wonderful living and working in Austin. And I say "living" because I spent many, many hours at this high, at the high school, working with kids from 1975 to 2002. I had a blast. The kids were wonderful. They enjoyed what I was trying to teach them. They sang their hearts out. And I will never, ever forget my experience at St. Paul's on the Hill. I was there for 34 years. We now have a new music director, and I'm so glad to be retired!
In honor, as a proclamation from the Board of Education, and I'll just read the end of this because it's quite lengthy and extensive, but it says, "Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Education of the Austin Union Free School District pauses to honor Ms. Carolyn Black and express its appreciation for her outstanding service to the community and contributions and dedication to the children of Austin."
Thank you.
Thank you.
Couple few. I know, they thought that, we have our Assemblywoman from New York State, Dana Levenburg.
Hi Dana, how are you? We work together as children. Yeah, okay. Yeah, well, anyway, on behalf of the New York State Assembly, we would like to also honor you for all of the contributions you made to our community and this great school district. So thank you so much, and it's just a pleasure to honor you as part of this month that we are taking to recognize American history and Black history as a little part of American history and a musical part, so not just this month, but every day. Congratulations. Thank you for your contribution.
Yeah. The Town of Austin would like to thank you. This is, again, very lengthy and it covers pretty much everything here, except my heartfelt thank you for what you've done to the students of Austin, for the Austin community, for music into our lives, into, you know, so many kids' lives, to provide a safe after-school space where they can express themselves. Just thank you so much from the Town of Austin. And the Mayor of Austin also sent you a proclamation. They are having their meeting tonight, which is with regret, they won't be able to honor all of you amazing ones.
Don't get too comfortable. We're going to do full honorees and full board photo op in a few minutes. So everyone's in the hot seat still.
Helen Tinch-Williams. Ms. Williams began her career as an educator in 1961 at Claremont School in Austin as a vocal music teacher. During her tenure, she taught a variety of grades from first to fifth. She retired from the Austin Union Free School District after teaching for 38 years. Ms. Williams served as an adjunct professor at Manhattanville College of School of Education in Purchase, New York. She entered SUNY Freedonia at the age of 16 and was the first person in her family to go to college. While at Freedonia, Ms. Williams participated in the first decade of the Hillman Opera productions and held leadership roles in many student groups, serving as president of the college choir, festival chorus, words and music, and served as vice president of the junior class. Ms. Williams earned her music education degree from Freedonia and her master's degree from Manhattanville College and continued her studies at New York University. Ms. Williams is a charter member of the Lynx Incorporated Greater Hudson Valley Chapter, African-American Advisory Board of Historic Hudson Valley, Hope's Door Advisory Board, American Women of African Heritage, and former consultant to today's students, tomorrow's teachers. Helen is a mentor for college students, a caretaker of seniors, and advocate for an inmate at the Bedford Women's Correctional Facility. Ms. Williams is a recipient of many awards, including but not limited to the 2001 March of Dimes Mother of the Year, the 2006 Rotary Foundation Paul Harris Fellow, the 2010 Hillman Memorial Music Association and Jesse Hillman Award for Excellence, the 2011 Dorothy Height Distinguished Black Family Award from the National Council of Negro Women, the 2012 Dress for Success Toast to Our Mothers, and True Reflection Award from Family Services of Westchester. In keeping with her dedication to education, Ms. Williams established the Dr. Richard Chiel Music Award Scholarship Fund with the Freedonia College Foundation. Please join me and give me a round of applause for Helen Tinch-Williams.
Mr. Schnecker, who's Schneck to me, he was one of my boys in the boys' course and when I had at Claremont School. And I just came through the line and I thought I recognized a face, and of course, it's one of the Banter families, whom I also had somebody in that family when I was here. I think I probably have had one of every person in this building, if you're 50 or younger, maybe 60 or younger. I've been around a long time. It's my pleasure especially to get this award tonight, and I'm so happy that you are honoring Hester Spencer. When I first started teaching in the school year 6061, I started as a substitute teacher. And when I became, after this substituting job was done, I said, "Why did the music teacher go leave? Why, why did she leave?" Because they asked me if I'd come back and continue after my leave, and they said, "She had a nervous breakdown." And I thought, "Okay, this is what I'm in for. All right, I gotta just brace myself and go." So for 38 years, I did not have a nervous breakdown. I may have given some nervous breakdowns in the interim, but I was very successful in that too. Hester Spencer, when I became a teacher here in Austin, she was the only Black faculty member who also went on to become the first Black American administrator. She was also my mentor. I learned so much about teaching, about interacting with kids, interacting with parents, just what all teachers need to know when they're starting in into a new position. I adored her. She was always on point. I still remember things that she told me to do and told me things not to do, how to deal with administrators, how to deal with parents, and how to deal with the kids that I had to work with in my classes. So it's my privilege to get this award this evening. I adore every minute of my 38 years of teaching. There was not one time that I didn't feel like, "I can't wait to stop. I can't wait to retire." Right up until the very last moment, when I gave my last concert, and I had, I decided that it was time for me to move on to do something else. Don't forget, I started college at 16, I started teaching at 20, so I was ready to do something else with my life. Well, I could still do it, while I had most of my faculties working and most of my limbs were also working. So I thought, "Okay, now's the time to go." So thank you so much for this evening. I really appreciate the effort that you did to find me, because up until three days ago, I saw one of my former students, and she said, "We are trying to get, find you. We want to give you an award at the board meeting, but we couldn't find you." I said, "Where'd you look? Did you start with the Board of Education?" I've lived in this town my whole married life, so you found me, and I'm here. Maybe you didn't want to find me, but I'm here. You found me, and I really appreciate this award tonight. Thank you so much.
So Helen, on behalf of the Board of Education, I'd like-
You can call me Helen now, huh?
I know, Ms. Williams.
Who told you that?
I'd like to present you with this clock on behalf of the Board of Education.
Oh, good, thank you.
And I'll just read the end of the proclamation here. Be now, therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Austin Union Free School District pauses to honor Ms. Helen Williams and express its appreciation for her outstanding service to the community and contributions and dedication to the children of Austin.
Thank you.
Thank you. And at this time, I'd like to call up Assemblywoman Dana Levenburg and Town Supervisor Liz Feldman to come up as well.
Having served on the Board of Education many years ago, it's also my, my pleasure to honor educators because it's, you know, so we know how important your job is and was, and how much you did, and how many students' lives you touched, and I think Mr. Schnecker's just one of them.
Yes, he is.
So thank you so much, and I don't know, this is, okay, so on behalf of the New York State Assembly, I'd like to present you with this proclamation, saying all these wonderful things about you that have been said already, and just, again, congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Okay, every time your name is mentioned on our Facebook chat for our class and any other class, all I hear is, "Oh, my God, I love her." Throughout, you know, now that I'm Town Supervisor, I can finish with plenty of friends, and we all agree. I've never heard anyone say that they didn't help you. I owe you a thread to thanks for introducing me to opera, putting me in butterfly, who would ever do it? And then the next year, putting me in Who Looked Truly Bad? I mean, you know, like, you know, broaden our horizons with a smile on your face, and it's appreciated, and, you know, just thank you from pretty much everybody, but especially you are always one of my favorites, and I thank you so much for your very, so this is from the Town of Austin, and it says all the wonderful things that are up there, but, you know, another one of my board members also, another 10, you know. So thank you so much. And the Mayor of Austin also sent him a-
We're going to do another photo?
So this next award is in memory of Emily Schrock. Ms. Schrock, a lifelong resident of Austin. She served as an aide at the Austin High School for many years. Ms. Schrock opened a very successful food business after graduating from high school, known as the Dew Drop on Hunter Street in Austin. Ms. Schrock was a very active person in the Austin PTA, having served as a president during the 1960s, and she was one of, if not the first, Black woman to serve in that capacity. Ms. Schrock served as a member of the Open Door Board of Directors and Executive Board. Ms. Schrock served as a coordinator of the Greater Austin Chamber of Commerce, Go Yes Youth Employment Service, maintaining lists of job opportunities for the community. Ms. Schrock hosted a weekly cooking show called What's Cooking on the Austin High School radio station, W O S S FM 90.3. Ms. Schrock was active in all aspects of civic life within the community, including getting young adults to register to vote and have a voice. Ms. Schrock worked with Assemblywoman Sandra Galiff during the 1970s. So I'd like to have, I guess, are you doing with the-
Sorry, Grandkids.
Oh, okay. To have our grandkids come up, and we have a, we have a recognition. So I will, like my colleague, also read off just kind of the bottom part where we are, "Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Austin Union Free School District pauses to honor the memory of Ms. Emily Schrock and to express its appreciation for her outstanding service to the community and contributions and dedication to the children of Austin." We thank you for that. I'd like to invite Assemblywoman Dana Levenburg, as well as Town Supervisor Liz Feldman, to come up to present the award as well.
So it's so exciting that, that your mom, grandma, okay, sorry, I'm sorry, I just thought you, you know, she loves you very much, that she was somebody, she was close to Sandy Galiff, who was my predecessor, and she loved her so much, and you know also how important AIDS are, not to mention delicious food, which is what your mom was known for. And so on behalf of the New York State Assembly, and I'm sure if Sandy knew that she was going to be mentioned here, she would have been here too, on behalf of all of us, we say congratulations to you on behalf of your grandma. So thank you for the heritage that you continue.
And I'll be happy to the Town of Austin, we want to thank you for sharing her memory and the whole community. You know, people don't realize how much, how much the AIDS did for the kids and how much, you know, kids looking up to them or them just keeping them in mind, united so well. They do so much more than they deserve any better for. And the Dew Drop was famous, so.
The next one is in memory of Kenneth Lacour. Mr. Lacour enlisted in the United States Armed Forces after graduating from the St. Peter's Academy in Dallas, Texas in 1958. Mr. Lacour was a communications specialist. He worked in IT and intelligence, served overseas during the Vietnam War, and was stationed in the Philippines. After his time in the Philippines, Mr. Lacour was stationed in Paris, France, where he played semi-pro football. Upon returning to the States, Mr. Lacour was stationed at the Warner Robins Air Force Base. He was then stationed at the Eglin Air Force Base and served as communications specialist at the Aerospace Defense Command Center. His last stationed base was at Fort Dix, New Jersey. After serving 16 years in the Air Force, Mr. Lacour was hired as detention aide at the Austin High School and later worked as a school monitor and attendance moderator. Mr. Lacour went back to school to study guidance counseling and earned his bachelor's degree in education from Mercy College, and later completed his master's science degree in school counseling. After earning his degree, Mr. Lacour returned to Austin High School and served as a guidance counselor for over 30 years. Mr. Lacour devoted his time to supporting and organizing events at the Austin High School and enjoyed working with students and contributing to the community. I'd like to have a round of applause in memory of Kenneth Lacour and ask his family members to please join us up here at the podium.
On behalf of my family, my sister Emma, who's here with me as well, we thank everyone, and I thank the school board and everyone who my father had touched. Dad was a character, I will say that much. For those of you that work with him, know that from everything that he did for the school, he always believed in the children, and he always believed in helping the students get to where they needed to go. He was always an open door in the guidance office. I remember even living on, on the weekends, kids would knock on our door, be on the porch asking dad information about college and all kinds of things, and I would say to dad, "Like, why does everyone keep knocking on the door?" You know, and that's one thing about being part of Austin, that once you're a part of Austin, you know, it never stops. Dad was more a harmonious mayor, you know, everybody would call me and let me know that they saw dad out and about. My sister and my family sometimes cringed because dad would be at places he wasn't supposed to be, such as Dunkin' Donuts and McDonald's. We would always find ways- But we thank everybody for this. And we appreciate all of you for recognizing my father, for all the contributions that he made for this community and for the students of Austin. Thank you.
So as to recognize your father, in addition, we have an award that the board would like to present to you. So I will read the bottom paragraph. It's, "Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Austin Union Free School District pauses to honor the memory of Ms..." Oh, I got the wrong one here, sorry. Is that, wait, hold on, sorry. "It pauses to honor the memory of Kenneth Lacour and to express the appreciation for his outstanding service to the community and contributions and dedication to the children of Austin." So thank you very much. I'd like to invite up here Assemblywoman Dana Levinberg, as well as Town Supervisor Liz Feldman, to present the award.
So congratulations to you. And we were so sad to lose your dad. He really was an integral part of the community. And I think, I'm pretty sure my kids were in school with you. Am I right? I think so, right, Mila?
Yeah.
And, you know, again, just, he was, he was a part of it. You guys were a part of Austin, and it was a family affair. And he truly did give his all every single day to the school. And we know how important guidance counselors are. And his, all of us hearing about his history and serving our country, you know, we couldn't be prouder of having, have him as a part of this district. So congratulations on behalf of the New York State Assembly. And thank you for sharing him with Austin and all the kids here.
All right. On behalf of the town of Austin, I would like to thank you so much for sharing him. I know he's given so much to the community through the easygoing manner, through his jokes. Through his dedication, I know when I was in the school, my mom was very excited. And here's a happy picture. And on behalf of Reece Levin and the Village Board of Trustees, who couldn't be here, there's yet another proclamation, thanking him for his dedication.
So I just want to, before, I want to have our village historian, Joyce Shirock Cole, who is an immense resource, if you will, for us during these celebrations, along with our district clerk, Illy Ortiz. Thank you both so much for all the work you do to help us bring this to light. I just want to make sure we remember the spirit of this award. And I'm glad that we're able to, it started out as honoring Ms. Hester Bateman Spencer Hines posthumously. And we've honored some people here tonight posthumously. But I'm glad we are able to give people their flowers while they're still with us as well. And so I'm glad everyone was able to come out. And I'm glad, thankful for the board to continue to support this award. It was erected in the honor of Ms. Hester Bateman Spencer Hines. And as it was said by Ms. Williams, her contributions to the district and how they went unknown. So I wanted to make sure that we no longer have to have, as they say, hidden figures here in Austin, and we can continue to honor everybody for the lives and the impacts that they have on future generations. As you heard everyone say here tonight, there's just memories, memories and memories from all students, and it's such great contribution to this community. And I'm thankful for everyone for their participation and their work to bring tonight to light. So I'll let our village historian close us out with some remarks.
Good evening. So Mrs. Williams, I was the one that found you when you walked in and found me. It was lovely. I was just starting my search, and she walks into my play, and I said, "You gotta be kidding me. I didn't even start looking for her yet, and she just walked in." So that is like the epitome of your teacher showing up for you even after so many years. And like Liz, I thought I was an opera singer after you taught me and you got me kicked out of my living room quite a few times because I wasn't very good at it. But all of you, it's, this is a little tear jerky for me because two of the members are my family, Uncle Kenneth and Aunt Emily. Their presence and your presence mattered to us. I told Ms. Williams when I saw her, seeing a black, beautiful, strong, dignified woman made a difference. Ms. Black, when I got older, seeing a strong, beautiful, dignified black woman made a difference. Seeing my uncle in a position of power and helping other kids was empowering. And then knowing Aunt Emily, because by that time I was, she had passed when I was in school, but hearing her legacy meant something. It is empowering to know your history. Your presence does matter, even if it's for, if it's singing and making us think we can do anything. I thought I was an opera singer. Ms. Black, watching you made it possible that I wrote a play, even though I wasn't your student, but I watched you. We watch. Kids pay attention. So we thank you for your contributions because they really did matter, and we still talk about you all today. So I thank the school board for honoring these amazing people because they deserve that and more. And I thank you all for coming out.
I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so.
I see you.
I'm sorry. I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so.
I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so.
I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so.
I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so.
I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so.
I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so.
I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so.
I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so.
I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so.
I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so.
I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so.
I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so.
I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so.
I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so.
I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so.
I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so.
I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so.
I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so.
I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so.
I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so.
I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so.
I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so.
I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so.
I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so.
I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so.
I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so.
I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so.
I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so.
I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so.
I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so.
I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so.
I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so.
I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so.
I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so.
I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so.
I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so.
I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so.
I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so.
I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so.
I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so.
I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so.
I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so.
I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so.
I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so.
I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so.
I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so.
I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so.
I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so.
I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so.
I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so.
I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so.
I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so.
I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so.
I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so.
I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so.
I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so.
I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so.
I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so.
I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so.
I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so.
I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so.
I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so.
I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so.
I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so.
I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so.
I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so.
I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so.
I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so.
I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so.
I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so.
I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so.
I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so.
I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so.
I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so.
I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so.
I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so.
I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so.
I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so.
I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so.
I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so.
I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so.
I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so.
I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so.
I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so.
I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so.
I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so.
I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so.
I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so. I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so. I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so. I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so. I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so. I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so. I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so. I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so. I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so. I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so. I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so. I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so. I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so. I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so. I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so. I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so. I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so. I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so. I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so. I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so. I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so. I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so. I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so. I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so. I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so. I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so. I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so. I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so. I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so. I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so. I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so. I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so. I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so. I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so. I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so. I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so. I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so. I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so. I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so. I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so. I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so. I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so. I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so. I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so. I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so. I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families together for a photo, that would be great, so. I think if we could get the whole board and get all of our four honorees and their families
I'd like to stay for all the fun stuff.
Is anybody know where Alida is?
Thank you, goodness, you were there.
Thank you.
Yes, yes. Sounds good, sounds good.
Tess, oh, hello. All right, that was a wonderful way to start a Board of Education meeting, but I'm going to have to call us to order because we have lots of business to get through tonight. And I think we'll now continue on to item 2.2 on our work session, which is the superintendent's update, and I will ask our superintendent, Ms. Fox Alter, to take it away.
Hello, everyone, and welcome. In particular, I want to welcome and thank our...
Is he not on?
Oh.
You were?
All right. Testing one, two, three. This is a perfect segue into my first comment. I want to welcome our two OHS students, Gionsevan, who are working through the technology tonight. First of all, thank you all. You're under a high-pressure situation, lot of presentations, a lot of things. This is a little different, and it's a public legal meeting, so we understand, and we really do thank you for giving up your Wednesday night. They typically are a little longer than what you're used to, but we do very much appreciate the both of you, and thank you for doing this. Thank you. Okay, so, first of all, I want to welcome everybody back from the February break. I hope everyone had a chance to relax and rejuvenate and reconnect with family. And now we're here into the height of our budget season, and all kinds of great conversations, so there's a lot of work that will be taking place. But first of all, I just want to, as we're coming, as was beautifully announced earlier, the end of February, the end of our month of Black History, and there were so many activities taking place here in the Osning School District. As many of you who have been in the audience tonight can see, there has been a PowerPoint in the back throughout the evening of important events here at AMD as well. So let me just give you a little bit of a highlight, and I want to give a shout out to my colleague, Melissa, because for two hours before tonight's evening, we had the third meeting of the new African-American Heritage District Community Collaboration. It's trying to really put a huge, you know, pin on the work that we're doing for Black History Month and make it throughout the year. Anne Deely, I want to thank you, you're in the audience tonight, you did an outstanding presentation going over every, all the highlights and events that were for each school, and feedback from the committee and the audience who were there, and I just thought it was an outstanding meeting, and I want to thank everyone for their participation. And for Joyce, who gave a great, you know, Bethany Art Center and even at the library, different communications that she has with different school districts, and I want to commend our administrators and teachers here in Osning for the level of work, clearly leading the way. Just some certain highlights that occurred this, throughout the month, we had a number of Black community leaders visit Brookside, including Alida and Latoya. There was a wonderful Black History Dinner at Brookside. We had a Wally Assembly at Clermont. I mean, the list goes on. We had wonderful, I heard the feedback, maybe Melissa could add to it, from our, or even Anne, the African-American Heritage, the project showcase at the Bethany Arts Center. And Kimmy actually had a couple of kids who she put on the spot on Zoom during our meeting who really gave a wonderful reflection on their participation at the Bethany Arts Center. We had a Black History scavenger hunt, the impact of Black American children at Clermont. That was super exciting, and kids were enthusiastic to be there. We had the Black History Music Minute at Roosevelt, word art contest at Roosevelt, the wonderful collection of Bethany Arts Center field trips. And I really think, Anne, I don't mean to call you out like this right now, but at our meeting earlier, we really do need to put together some of the images from your PowerPoint and the work, and just get it up on the website, put it out on social media, because I'm not going to do it justice, given the presentation that you had earlier today. We had a Soul Steps Assembly at Roosevelt, I would have loved to have been part of that one, celebrations at AMD and OHS. We had a virtual library author assembly at AMD. A guest speaker from the Vice President of Atlantic Records spoke to the AMD students, I think that was yesterday, correct? Is that Maria? Anyway, I can't remember, I think it was yesterday. And we had an African-American read-in by American storyteller Kwame Alexander and Dale Coulter at OHS. And very importantly, our MBK Fellows, Jaden Carrera and Gavin Thomas Walters, represented Osning at the New York State MBK Stand and Deliver Conference. We just couldn't be prouder of all the activities and events that happened. I first, right now, and maybe it's over, I can't, maybe someone knows the score, our girls' basketball team are at the County Center for the semifinals versus Ketchum tonight. So if anyone knows whether they won or not, could they let me know? But that's having, for those of you who know basketball, it's being at the County Center, it's really a special event and super, super exciting, so we want to congratulate the girls and cheer them on. OHS hosted the Youth Leadership Summit today for the second year in a row, and included districts from Westchester and Rockland to help promote and grow our Unified Sports League throughout all districts. So a real special opportunity for our students, and I want to congratulate Osning High School for paving the way in leadership in terms of that activity. We had a youth-to-youth OHS students and our substance abuse counselors attend a Breath of Fresh Air Conference Youth Leadership at the Vape Free Future for our students. And again, that dovetails with the grant that we won here in Osning to combat, called Fighting the Tar Wars. We won that through the county, and that will take place at Roosevelt School. Our robotics team will be competing March 8th and 9th at Rockland Community College in Suffolk, and it's free and open to the public. If anyone hasn't been at a robotics team event, it's really pretty exciting. I used to go all the time, and it just, it's a lot of fun, creativity, imagination, it's great. Come see our students in action, competing against other teams throughout the nation, by the way, as well as international teams. A special congratulations to Ava and Emma for reading 1,000 books with the Osning Public Library, which I think is terrific. And our OHS student, Thomas Kong and Candace Yu, were named National Merit Scholarship Program finalists, so congratulations to Thomas and Candace. Last but not least, I want to highlight that our mascot survey will be live March 7th through the 14th. It's going to be shared via an OBLAST social media and posted to our website. I want to thank Joy Riot, the consultants, who are leading us through this very research-based and scientific process, and I'm excited. We want to encourage everyone to participate in the survey, so we get lots of feedback and information to help inform decision-making. So that's my superintendent's update for tonight, February 28th. As many of you might notice, taking a look at the agenda, we are going to give a, basically just a brief district overview, a draft of what we're looking at in terms of cost drivers, expenses, and potential revenues that we're working on for the school year. I think Osning does a wonderful thing by setting aside a Saturday. It'll be a week from this Saturday where we will be doing a real deeper dive into all the items that are in the budget. And also this evening, as promised, we have an update to our capital work, capital projects, because we just don't have, we're not just planning around the bond, we also have active and ongoing capital projects, and we have been working with our traffic consultants, our buildings and grounds, our facilities, to help inform and provide the board and the community with updated information on knowledge that we're...
Testing, yes? Okay. So I'm hoping that the audience at home can see the actual presentation. We are having some technical difficulties putting it up on the screen. And then I also just ask that Cabinet and the Board of Education, look at the document that is in the board docs. So that's what I'll be speaking to. The first slide says "draft," only because we've been, it's a work in progress, the budget itself. So that's why we are still labeling this a draft. The numbers in here are not final. We get more to a final place right before the Saturday meeting, which is next Saturday on the 9th. So I don't want anyone to look at this document or this presentation and think that this is the final recommendation for the numbers and also revenues and expenses. Once we formally meet on next Tuesday, next Saturday, it'll be saying the superintendent's recommended budget, and that's not what this is currently. It's just an overview. So when you look at page two, the agenda for budget development overview for tonight, is to look at some of the major expense drivers. As we know, we are in the business of educating students, which requires human capital. So our biggest expenses are always going to be salary and benefits. Our transportation expenses is a major category, facilities, and of course, our capital work that... 24-25 budget. The major revenues is always going to be state aid, that's the second-largest revenue for our school district. We also rely on savings from the current school district to appropriate for next year. We have to have a conversation about what the tax levy will look like, we have a sense of what that calculation is. And actually, the New York State Controllers' Office requires all school districts to enter in the data necessary to determine a cap on Friday, March 1st. The other thing is, we will be evaluating how we can use the reserves to help balance the budget. So those are all the revenue sources that we look at in developing the budget. The next steps regarding budget development, which is very important for tonight, we do have one step in our secret process for the... ...speaker, and putting an item, a capital item in the budget. So I'll let them speak further to that, but I just wanted to reiterate the importance of coming to a conclusion with the capital projects that are being proposed tonight. Jared is going to chime in on the non-related potential bond projects, just our regular projects that we're going to do. But all of those projects that you'll see have to be given a green light, because we do need to add that information in order to determine the tax levy limit on Friday. It can change, but we do need to establish, we do have to report something.
And on that, that March 1st is this Friday, and we have to by law submit the calculation to them. It is not something that the board is bound to doing, you still have decision-making, we just have to report that. So it is with respect to the board's role in deciding what the budget should be, but this is what it can be, given certain drivers.
Boarded or determined by March 1st?
What they ask for are related, like the capital is an exemption as part of the tax levy cap. So in order for me to identify what the exemption amount is going to be, I come up with a list of capital projects that are proposed for next school year. There's other capital items that are in there, debt services in there. So all of those items are actually exempt from the tax levy limit calculation. So that's the most important piece in the calculation, is those exemptions, and that needs to be reported with a dollar figure. So I need to summarize that amount, back out the reserves, back out the building aid, and that's going to help us identify, or will identify what the tax levy limit is.
Tax levy limit, that's a percentage of what? It's in that you're saying these capital pieces are exempt, meaning if we, if the calculation of the tax levy percentage was 2%, these are not taken to account in terms of that, correct? This is beyond that extra? I'm just trying to understand, when you say tax levy, is that a percentage? Is that a raw number? What exactly does that mean?
It would be very hard for me to try to explain the tax levy calculation tonight. I do have five fast facts when it first came out that I can share with you, but the 2% comes into play with the CPI, the Consumer Price Index, that's one portion of it. The other portion of it is the base, the tax base, growth factor. So that's brick-and-mortar improvements, and there's a percentage that they, that's already supplied and associated with the district by the state. The CPI is already determined as well. Even though CPI is over 2%, it cannot exceed 2%. That's part of the calculation. And then the other part of the calculation are exemptions. So one thing that we have to calculate or give information for is pilots, that's one thing. The other thing that we have to give information for is ERS and TRS. ERS and TRS are also excluded from the tax cap calculation if it's over two percentage points from year to year. TRS is not, ERS is. So the exemption, there is an exemption for ERS for 24-25 of $10,000. And then the biggest exemption, which is our biggest expense for exemptions, is capital. And anything related to capital, you put into a formula, you add it up, you back out preserves, you back out building aid, and then you come up with a net number. So what it calculates is what the tax levy can be. So in this instance, hypothetically, it's $109 million going forward for 24-25, based on our calculation. In this current year, we have $102, close to $103 million. So between $103 and $109, a $6 million increase in the levy, potentially, for 24-25.
And that's why you have to report by Friday? That number, the 103...
I've already put the data in, I just need to confirm it and press the submit button. But you'll see later in this presentation what we anticipate the levy limit to be, based on the information that we have today.
So it is, you know, a difficult thing, you're right, Rob, in terms of explaining to the community what it is. People have this misnomer, that it's just 2%, and it's not. It's got a ton of factors that the state already decides for us. Then we have some local pieces that get associated with it, your pilots, but the biggest exemption, I think it's ones we've talked about, are your capital expenses, because they want to encourage communities to spend on, so they don't count them in that. You're not bound to this, this is just what you could do. Obviously, a board will make local decision-making.
Right, so what you're reporting on Friday is the pot of money that will need to be, if we adopted this budget, to be collected by the district to pay for all the stuff in the budget as part of that, right? It's the pot of money.
Yeah, it's the maximum that you could.
Maximum, okay. Minus the exemptions, so the exemptions are not part of that 103 to 109, right? That's separate. It's not part of that.
Well, it's part of the budget.
But it's not part of that, it's not part of any, it's exempted out of that, it's a separate pot, correct or not correct?
I don't know, I have to think about the way they're stating that. It's still in the budget, it's just...
And it's still part of the levy.
They remove it and let you have the ability to raise taxes and not limit that ability with the tax gap.
To the cap, right. It's outside the tax gap. So for instance, if it was 2% with the calculation on the cap, and we had capital of X amount above that, that capital, it's not part of the cap. You can, you can collect that if the board approves the capital expenditure beyond the 2% to pay for it.
It's a subtle...
I'll phrase it a little differently, and I think Alida will get the, but I think it changes what your tax cap is, based on what your exemptions are. But let's get all the answers, so I think it's not outside of it, it just changes.
Yeah, it just makes it different. It allows you legally to be what you could, what it could be.
Right, right. So a district has a lot of capital improvements in the, in the community, they may have an 8% tax cap, even though basically CPI is 2%, right? So that's how it gets to.
Thank you, now I get it.
So the third, the third slide, it says major expense driver, the area comparison. So the cones represents the 23, 24 school year, and the other cone, or half the cone, represents the 24, 25 year, as projected, and is rolled over by this. In this, in this graph, the $79 million salary going up to $83 million salary is simply a roll over. It does not include any additional staff. The benefits, we see a very large increase related to primarily helping to...
Um, the benefits, we see a very large increase related to primarily health insurance, which is a little bit of that. Um, maybe there's an increase in transportation, um, increase in facilities likely, um, the increase in capital, we'll see, we see, has gone from 12 to 14 million, and that's budget to budget, um, as you know, we do offset those amounts with capital reserve. Um, and then, uh, BOCs has gone up, um, by a, a million dollars or a little bit over. And then the other category is, in, uh, includes contractual expenses, um, it includes, um, materials, supplies, equipment, textbooks, um, so that's the other, um, category, uh, tuition paying, for, for students that we pay tuition for in other school districts, so that's the other category there. That's what's included in that other category.
And we would have things like added district placements for some special ed. We, we do enroll students in career and oc ed through BOCs, so there are different layers there. And I think it's also important to reiterate what Alida mentioned, that this is simply a rollover of this year and next year. It does not include any additional staffing or any additional items that the administrators will, have asked for, so the board will also see those too.
So just to give you an overview, like I said, the teacher's requirements have done from before instead of the calculation of the tax cap, um, also is exempt beyond an increase of two percentage points. Uh, what you see here is employer contribution rate, um, so this school year, it was 10.29%. So that means the school district has to pay 10.29% of every dollar that is spent, um, um, for, for pension expenses. So we have to contribute 10.29% of all of our teacher and administrator salaries and give it to TRS. Um, next year, it went down slightly, um, it is at 10.2%. Um, that's a, but we didn't budget that amount for 10.2%. Um, we're still at, um, slightly higher, I think we're at 10.3 or 10.31. So, um, we just need to modify that because they've given us a range, um, but it doesn't make that significant of a difference. The TRS is not the issue here for this school, for next school year. Um, you can see in the next slide that, um, ERS, which is for non-teaching staff, which includes clerical, buildings and grounds, security aides, teacher aides, some directors, um, that is increased significantly. So it's going from, again, this is an employer contribution rate that you see in the graph, it's going from 13 to 15. So it's over two percentage points. But the only thing that they exempt is the point one, which represents for the school district, $10,000. So that's already part of the controllers' calculation, it's in the, in the portal already, I didn't have to calculate it, that's the number that they come up with.
Alida, is that done at the state level, meaning that every district in the state sees that same increase, or is that based on our contracts?
Yes.
So statewide?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, employee benefits, like I said, that's the biggest, um, one, the second largest increase of our salaries in this budget. Um, health insurance is going up almost $3 million. Um, and we have, we used out to BOCs to try to identify a way of letting, uh, food to them, however, it's quite, um, entailed, um, and we have to do a lot of, uh, fast book work, so I don't anticipate, once again, having that done prior to, um, passing or presenting the budget, but we will continue to look at that. We did me, um, Don, um, me, Don and me, Don and I, met with, um, a carve-out, who were, um, looking to carve out our Medicare expenses, um, so we were trying to see if we can do anything with that. I don't think it's likely for us to get that done on either, um, prior to, um, the presentation of the budget to the voters, mostly because we just need to make sure we're doing our due diligence, since there are not that many, it's maybe only one school district in our area that is enrolled in that program, and that, 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 that school, that school district is in the line. So I don't feel comfortable making a knee-jerk reaction or decision, we need to vet it more. Um, Medicare has grown up also by $200,000, it continues to rise. Um, it wasn't always at a billion, it was less over the past several years. Um, the other includes our, um, dental, it includes our, um, workers comp, uh, it includes our disability, so it just in our business. So you see a very slight increase there, and then, um, we spoke about the ERS and the TRS, um, and what those changes are. Okay, so I'm at slide number seven right now, so you, everybody can lead along. So the 23, 24 budget, that's this current school year, is currently 167, 14, 4, 167 million, 14, 417. The proposed budget for 2420 is strictly rollover budget, um, except for the addition of the capital work, um, increasing from, uh, 12 to 14 million, which will be offset by the capital reserve. Um, so that total is 181, 643, 32 million. So that is an increase of 14.6 million from budget to budget.
Do you have, um, the, for, could you publish for us on one, on the next slide, or the previous slide? Um, the 22, 23, um, figures for reserve? Do you have the actual versus the final also available to us?
No, no, no. I just have to audit it on those. I can't, I can't give you that information because we're gonna make, making decisions without reserves.
Okay.
So that number's gonna change. And then there's all
Would it be pretty drastic? Would it be pretty drastic, or be, or that you're aware of?
How does it turn?
Mm-hmm.
What do you mean by drastic?
Well, you're, 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 you're saying that you can't publish it because it's gonna change, is it gonna be a sign, how drastic of a change will it be?
Going down?
The way that, the numbers, I, I don't know which way they're going.
You said reserves.
No, 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 no. You're, so you said, so when I asked about the actual versus the budget, you said you can't publish that because it's gonna change. So I was just asking, well, how drastic does it change?
Of the budget itself. It's not gonna be that drastic.
So it, it can be tentatively furnished to us as a board?
It will be, but on the meeting on, on Saturday. We normally do it, um, maybe the, the week before, or, um, the board knew before. Um, but at the very latest, um, I think we were focusing on Monday, and it would be hand- delivered to your, um, your home.
So those are the budget books that we've, we've typically received before every budget Saturday?
Right, right.
Okay, got it, right.
And Alida, just on slide six, employee benefits, health insurance, Medicare, other, that is done on the local district level, right? Where the TRS, ERS is, but so those are things done luckily. Okay, thank you.
Um, the analysis of the revenue comparing it for 23 to 24, 24 to 25, as you know, one of the biggest drivers for our increase this year was foundation aid, and so this year is the final phase of the foundation aid. Um, for 2425, the increase overall for state aid is projected to be $1.3 million. So you'll see that the difference, um, between the additional state aid for 2324 and the additional state aid for 2425 is down by $9.9 million. The, um, unappropriated fund balance, we are projecting, and we're still working on those figures as well, um, that we can possibly set aside in evaluating the savings for this school year, uh, potentially 5 million, we're still working on that number, as you know, we had, um, some transparency in our department, and the person that's just updating our figures is brand new once again. Um, so the difference is estimated to be an additional of $270,000. Again, unappropriated fund balance is basically the amount of savings that we have in the current year that we can apply in the future. We are potentially, um, using 7.7 additional capital reserves, um, to help fund, um, some of the projects that you'll see in the next slide. So that's an increase of 2.187, um, 391 in the use of reserves, uh, compared to last year, the ERS reserve and the TRS reserve. The ERS reserve, um, the overall bill for ERS is slightly above $1.6 million when you look at it, um, for 2425, even though there's a significant increase. Um, we have a healthy ERS reserve, so we can, um, we can, um, utilize 1.6 million of that reserve for next year, but we can't exceed that amount because it exceeds the amount in the budget law. It can't exceed the amount in the budget law. Related to TRS, um, that reserve is a little lighter, um, but we can apply 1.6 million to TRS reserve. Um, the TRS reserve bill, um, in the budget is about $7 million, um, so the 1.6 is okay, um, but we don't have as much as we have in the ERS, because we just established the TRS reserve. So like I said, hypothetically, right now, when I enter the data that I have before me in the draft form, and I press the submit button on Friday, the tax levy limit increase is $6.3 million. That is what is being calculated, based on the information I entered into the system that is being presented tonight. So you will see that the, the revenue, um, the additional revenue, um, this year was about $21.5 million. Again, a lot of that was attributed to foundation aid, 11.2 is the increase in the last phase in, and so for 2425, we don't see that increase, uh, we see $9 million less. So we have to plug the whole of the $9 million that's not recurring. So the way that we're plugging it is with, um, a portion of the capital reserve, the appropriated fund balance, and $3.2 million in reserves, and utilizing the ability to go up to $6.3 million additional tax levy.
Alida?
Based on the limit calculation, how about saying today?
I'll admit it, I'm, I'm pretty lost on this slide. I'm not following, maybe, maybe I'm the only one here, because I know I sent the, the note before. If you don't mind, can we go line by, row by row? So state aid, 2023, 24, 11.2 million, we'll call it. The state aid for this year went up by 1.318. So wouldn't you have 11.28 plus 1.318 go into that box? It's not, it's not a loss of 10, almost 10 million, right? Because the foundation, the, the state aid run approximately for this district for last year was 37, 3 total, all eight, including foundation. This year, it's 38, 8. That's where the 1.3 comes from, right? I think I'm tracking that correctly. So I don't understand why this is listed here as 1.318. It's not 1.318, right? It's 11, I'm not even sure why it says 11 versus the 37 million I just quoted. The 37 million is what the state aid, we, we got all, the whole pocket, the whole McGillis Day is saying is 37 million plus. So I'm not sure, I, I'm, I don't understand where 11.2 comes from, break out of that. But let's just say that's the number. Wouldn't the number in the 2024, 2025 box on the state aid row be 11.2 plus the 1.318? So if someone can help me with the math, that's 11.5, give or take?
11.2 plus 1.318?
Yeah.
Is 12.5, 12.6-ish.
I'm sorry, thank you, thanks for seeing that. So why is that a 9 million, 99961582 difference? Isn't it a net increase of 1? Shouldn't it be difference plus 1318?
No.
No?
No.
So, so why am I, um, help me out, because I'm, I'm totally lost.
The number that you're looking at in the state aid run reflects, reflects the total stock, foundation aid number. That's what that reflects. If you compare to, if you look at the state aid from 2223 to 2324, that's where that 11 million comes in at. So we were able to get an additional $11 million above and beyond 2223, which was the last phase in. This is looking at the additional dollars per year, not the overall state.
It's additional revenue.
The additional revenue, the additional state aid.
But we're not, we're not losing $9 million, right?
You're not losing $9 million.
We're just not getting the bumper that we've gotten the last few years while the state's been working to make us whole. Now we're whole, now we're back to getting the small increments that we've, if anything, that we've been seeing.
It's, it's probably important for me to articulate what this slide represents. So what this slide represents is that 11.2 million dollars was an amount that was given to us to be part of the base going forward, right? So that's the last large amount that we're getting. Again, that represents the increase from 2223 to 2324. So we were able to, um, uh, use that money for additional expenses, recurring expenses, so that was okay for 2324. We still have a gap because we're using recurring expenses and compounding them with that significant increase in salaries, the significant increase of benefits, but it's not being matched. We're not getting another $11 million, we're only getting 1.3. So it's just the same thing when you talk about the stimulus funds being put, it's the same thing with the state aid, because we, if, if you're not getting that amount continually going forward to pay for recurring expenses. So in this, in this, um, slide, what this is showing, that we have to find an additional $270,000 in unappropriated fund balance, we have to use an additional 2.1 for capital reserve to do the projects that we anticipate, we have to use an additional 3.2 to, um, pay for TRS, or maybe ERS and TRS reserve, and then we need to increase the tax levies by $6.3 million to make us whole and not have to cut in the 2425 budget. So although, I'm not suggesting that there's necessarily, we're going down, it's the difference between the revenue, the additional revenue that we're getting from budget to budget.
Cover expenses.
That, that, that's fine, um, I'm just gonna say as an, my, my wife will confirm that, very average person, that does not what that, that line looks like at all. It looks like we are, we are, we are dropping 10 million in state aid year over year. The delta, the gap, might be 996 that we gotta make up, but this, if we're gonna share this with the public and admittedly for the board, I totally got lost on it, maybe the rest of my trustees got it, but I, I, I was like, oh my God, we're losing $10 million. And that's not the case, we're getting an additional 1.3 year over year. Now, that's still, your, your point is that, that's fine, we got this nice increase, because as we know, a lot of districts lo, did lose money, and that's what the fight going in Albany right now. We actually went up. A lot of districts are advocating, oh my God, what did you do to us? We, we actually ended up net positive. I'm just saying, this looks like we are losing $10 million, not the gap we gotta make up the loss. So I, I would just say, if this is going to the public, that we wanna be a little bit more clear of this.
We will, we'll make sure in the budget brochure and everything that goes, but if you look at this in, and, and point understood, and if you look at it in 2324, this was the additional revenue that received, and because of that additional state aid and foundation aid, there wasn't revenue from the, the tax levy, there wasn't need to bring in revenue from TRS or ERS, which made, which made sense at the time. This year, in order to adjust that, Alida and I went, in conversations, we have a very comprehensive recommendation to the board to pull money from fund balance, that's why we wanna freeze the actual expenses now to have a, a healthy fund balance. And by the way, every single school district in New York State is doing that right now because of, uh, where they are with foundation aid, and, um, the hold harmless has been, um, not in place, we'll see what happens by March 31st, but Austin isn't in that boat. So also, you put money into reserves, um, for a rainy day, we're recommending that we use TRS revenue, we're recommending that you use ERS revenue, we're recommending that you use a capital reserve, we're then also recommending that, um, we use some of the C fund as well. And so there is a comprehensive use in this as a recommendation from us, that the use of your saved money and your reserves that get used this year.
I don't wanna, I don't, I don't know if, um, Alida, if you're done with your presentation, I have questions too, but I wanna give you time to finish and then can go around.
Okay, so again, I just wanna reiterate the importance of that slide, um, whether or not it's clear, we can, um, talk about that later, but the bottom line is that we don't have the additional $9 million in recurring revenue going forward. Um, we did not increase the tax levy, um, we did not We did not use reserves, as many reserves last year. So for this school, for the upcoming school year, that needs to be brought up to a level so that we can just simply roll over, since we're not getting that additional revenue from state aid. So it's coming from. And the recurring debt is in 23, recurring expenses. So the recurring expenses is in 2223, 2324, and it also is going to exist for 2425. We never addressed how we're going to move forward in a future year, given that there's a cliff with the state aid, the foundation aid. We just relied on the foundation aid, and now that that amount, that increase is going away, we have to subsidize it with those additional revenue streams. So I'm gonna move on to the next slide.
Sorry, can I just ask one question about that? I'm sorry, I'm just trying to get, make sure that this sticks, at least in my head. Isn't, it's not like, you know, this completely disappears and evaporates, doesn't it become part of our, what we think about like our budget going forward? Our budget doesn't get reduced by 9.9 million dollars going forward, right?
We are not reducing the budget by 9 million dollars.
No, I know we're not reducing it, but I'm just saying that the way, I'm just, I guess this is, I'm just getting a little bit lost in the fact that you're, you're showing deltas here, but the way that this looks right now, it looks like the budget is being reduced by 9.9 million dollars.
No.
And then there's offsets of what you're using to.
That says revenue. It doesn't say budget. It says revenue.
Okay, so you're.
It's additional revenue. That's what it is. The bottom line is the difference between the budget for this school year and the budget for the next school year is 14 million dollars, and we have to make up that revenue. And we only have an additional 1.3 million dollars in state aid to cover a 14 million dollar increase in our budget.
Okay.
I think that's the slide we will build into, so you can see that.
What would be good too, as we think about the budget going, when we go into the details, if we could, I mean, I think with a cliff and everything else, what in there was funded that put us in any kind of a risk that we have for a hole to be plugged? Because I think a lot of what we got from foundation aid in three years was a substantial amount, wasn't a small number. And, you know, I, I think there was a lot that we probably ended up having to cover. We just know how much of that is actually contractual that was used in there versus how many were, how much of that was used for like one-time expenses? Because it's, I think it's important to kinda understand what that is that creates an, because I don't think that this is gonna be just this year. I think it's gonna be next year, you're gonna look at this the same way.
Guys, I know we have a lot of questions. I'm just gonna ask that we let Alita get through her presentation. Hold your horses, sit on your hands, and then, you know, let us all go around. Because I don't wanna bombard her with the questions because she hasn't gotten to the punchline yet.
Fair enough. It's just, I'm questioning what's on the slide right now.
We got it. We all get there.
Okay, so slide number nine basically is a reserve fund balances as of June 30th. So that's when I, when you asked me about the projections or something like that, I thought you was talking about the reserves. So we utilize June 30th because that's the audited financial statements. These numbers are likely to go up just based on the interest income. So this is just giving you an idea of what the reserve balances were for the end of June 30th. So ERS, like I said, is a healthy one, reserve. So we're only using 1.6, and that's only, the only amount that we can use because that represents the entire ERS budget for 2425. For TRS, we have half of that, so if we take 1.6 million from that, we'll be left with 2.4 capital. We have a 19 million dollar amount right now. So if we take 7 million dollars away, we'll have a 12 million dollar amount. Tax serve, you'll see in an upcoming agenda, as we've done in the past, we have to establish a tax serve specifically for the 2324 school year. So we are able to utilize the current reserves and cycle it into the 2324 school year, the balance, so that we don't have to increase the reserves, we're just reallocating the money for the tax serve. And then the EVLR is, normally stays the same, and that's related to retirement benefits for employees that we hedge on. And then the designated for subsequent years is the amount that we appropriated for fund balance, and that was 4.7 million. We're hoping that we will be able to get 5 million out of this new budget. Preserve for incumbencies is basically purchase orders that we're not, we don't receive goods for, and we get them in this school year. And then prepay expenditures and advances primarily relates to the medical, the Nisha bill, because we have to pay in advance after the school year. And then the undesignated at the bottom is the 6.6, which represents 4%, of the ensuing year's budget, which is 2324. So I'm going to ask Jared to come up because we are going to talk about the capital projects that we are proposing, and that is on page 10 of this slide. So I, it's very important that we get to the point where we can make decisions related to this slide, because as I said, I do need to report on Friday, and this is the biggest part of that reporting that I need to be followed as much as possible. So what, the total expense is going to be, like I said, by about 14 million in the 2324. Some of the maintenance and security items that we see normally from year to year in our budget, which I don't believe exceeds a million dollars.
Correct. So I think also, just to add for a moment, that I wanna thank Jared and CPL and Aris for coming up with very detailed all-in costs about the driveway. We had a late presentation on the traffic study. We were given a green light by the board to sharpen pencils and to figure out lights and parking and grade and curbs and everything. So this is the amount here, and again, the timeliness on that decision and using reserves to do this. Globally, the board, I'm sure you are aware, that this amount then gets decreased from any proposed capital bond, so it helps reduce the amount that could be expended in that. Thanks, Jared.
So the, the three transfer, transfer to capitalize are the ones that are listed on the bottom of that slide you're looking at now, slide number 10. The first one is the lockdown system upgrade, so there's a summary given there, but looking at it from a high level, we're looking at upgrading the lockdown systems, basically getting them into a single source of responsibility. Right now, it's a bit divided. We're looking to add a significant number of notification devices, both text devices and blue light devices, such as like that one up on the wall there. And the other part of this, the big part of it, is that we're gonna enhance communication by going, by doing this upgrade, right? So we're gonna put a central panel in each building, which will coordinate the lockdowns, and that panel has the ability to communicate with the new IP phone system and also some of the text messaging and such, so that everybody in the district will know what's going on, especially the administrators, to know when, if a building goes into lockdown, you know, what happens at Claremont could affect this building and vice versa, that kind of thing. So we have a pretty robust lockdown system in place now, but what this money will do will enhance what we have, build on what we have, and also modernize what we have.
Right. It comes as a recommendation from our security consultants too, and I think all of us know from the research behind, when we have an emergency situation, the faster you can get into lockdown and the faster that you can communicate information, the better off you are. So I am impressed with the VoIP-based system now that is here and having your access control system, your VoIP-based system, your communication system, everything talking over the same platform through the same type of software is an important enhancement that was identified in our security audit, and I wanna thank Jared and Mike Hannah for working together to put together this proposal here.
Catherine, can I ask a non-money question of Jared about this?
Yeah, I just, I wanna make sure that we have time and space for all trustees to ask their questions, right? And so I think that one of the best ways to do that is to let them get through and then we can do it. If you got a simple clarification question, go for it. But we're talking philosophy and, you know, at the end of the presentation, I'd like to see this going forward and that by budget Saturday. I just, I think it's probably best if we hold those together.
That's not the question. Jared, just on the items here that are security-related, the lockdown, I guess the entrance door, the fire alarm, I guess, are those the priority items that came out of the Altera report? Because I, you know, I ran through that, and there was a pretty big punch list out of that thing. Which, I'll go on record, anything secure to me would be an absolute priority for the district, so that's just my opinion of one. So with that said, I assume that's, what you've got asked for here is not everything that was in the list, so how did you come up with this? Did you, did you say, okay, Alters, help us prioritize? And that for next, for the future, like, there'll be other things? Or are there more things that you do wanna do that you think are priority, but because of, you know, capital budgets and everything, we're not able to get to, security-wise?
So it's more of the latter, the former, your description. So it's a big list, we prioritized that list, and we got to these items and built the lockdown system improvements, which is a good place to start. There's gonna be other things we're doing in the future. Some of them frankly are low expense level, are pretty easy to implement, and others are not. This is one of the ones that are kind of on the higher end. But this will give us a good base moving forward to also build upon. But by doing this work, we'll be able to build upon and make even further improvements down the future.
Thank you.
So the next item up is the student entrance doors at OHS. These are the, these are the doors over by the gym, the gym entrances over there. This is really a maintenance item. Those doors see a lot of usage. We call, and I call them the student entrance door in this listing because that's where students come in and out of the building every day, that's where they check in. But it's also used in evening, for evening events and sporting events. Those doors get really super intense use. We're starting to see some maintenance items come up, crop up with those doors, and we wanna get ahead of it and not have them fall apart and have a real security problem because they are important. It's an important part of the operation of that building. And then the last item on the list is the firearm, fire alarm replacement work at Brookside. The fire alarm panel at Brookside is probably one of the older ones in the district. We've reached the end of its useful life. We've expanded on that panel a couple of times now, even since I've been here, and it's, it's time, it's time to upgrade that panel. And also, it'll give us the ability to expand in the future. We've already got some work that we're looking at, you know, right now, that was in last year, it's in the current year's budget to build an addition at Brookside, and there's more work potentially in the scope of the bond to do work at Brookside. So we just wanna make sure we're future-proofing ourselves in there. That's the summary of the transfer to capital waves.
And the big HVAC improvements we talked about, I mean, for those of you who keep an eye on the New York State Legislature, there's always a bill introduced that we, once you hit a certain temperature, that you, you know, close schools, just like in weather. But, and then we do run a comprehensive summer school program for many kids, having a building that can be climate-controlled. It was in the capital project, but using, it's a recommendation here to have Jared take it over and put it in our regular budget. Right?
So I would like to suggest that we continue with the presentation and ask CPL to come up to talk about the AMD group on the driveway. Again, in light of the fact that we need to make a decision related to that, and a portion of, there's, there's a resolution on the board agenda for tonight to allow the board to be the lead agency for the secret process for the AMD driveway.
Were we able to get any of the presentations running? Nope?
Is it?
Okay. I could, I could go off of this, so thank you.
I'm sorry, is this on board docs?
It is, yes.
Okay, so it's CPL's presentation. It separates from mine, so hopefully you can see it in board docs. So I can just go off.
Yep, yep. And now, thank you, Alita. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for having me. I'm Chris from CPL. I'm just gonna go through an update of where we're at with the capital project on some things. Mary had asked me to give a quick update on the church, just so as everyone knows that the district purchased the church, the building has gone through hazardous material abatement. The design team has assessed and documented the existing conditions of that building, and the proposed plans for that space are part of the upcoming bond project. So I just wanted to reinforce the history of that building. We're currently working through the SECRE and SHIPO process for that building, which is part of the overall secret process. So I'm gonna take one step back, and the secret process is kind of a convoluted process that is actually simple, that seems to be complicated. So it's, the crux of it is an environmental review. So I have a couple sentences here I'm gonna read just to refresh people's memory of what SECRE is and why it's even at the table. "The purpose of the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act, which is SECRE, is to identify and consider environmental impacts of any, of an action to determine whether actions must be modified to avoid or mitigate adverse environmental impacts. It is not the intent of SECRE that environmental factors be the sole consideration in reviewing an action. Rather, SECRE requires that environmental factors be balanced with the social and economic considerations." So that's just the background of what SECRE is and what it does and why we have to go through the process. So part of the secret process was doing the traffic study. So a quick update on the traffic study is that it's complete, and it was presented to the Board of Ed in January 17th. The Route 9 road diet project is before, being performed by the New York State DOT, so that's ongoing, and we are tracking that project and staying in tune with that project to make sure that it's in line and doesn't go astray from, from our goals within our project. One of the recommendations, and probably the most important recommendation that came out of the traffic study, was to provide that driveway out to Stormy Town Road. Now, the traffic study has determined that providing that new driveway will have a positive impact on the site. The proposed driveway does not have negative impact on surrounding roads, and this proposed driveway design, as Alita mentioned, would be incorporated outside the bond project, but is in line with the goals of the overall bond project and the overall goals of Austin as a, as a district. So if you do have that map pulled up on the board docs, it basically shows our proposed project of creating that driveway out to Stormy Town Road by repaving an existing parking lot and also providing a new parking lot for AMD that includes roughly 125 spaces. Now, the parking lot that's in front of AMD currently, which parking lot I parked in tonight, would be dedicated to Claremont. So I know parking and the space in general is limited up here, so moving some pieces around are gonna help both buildings. This proposed plan does have sidewalks and lighting, and does incorporate the future plans of the overall bond project for the potential of that passing and, and building the, the new 78 building on that campus. Moving on to the land studies, so the cultural resource study is basically just checking if there's any historic aspects of the site that we have to watch out for. While the site is above average for encountering prehistoric sites due to topography, proximity to other sites, and map documented sites based on the Phase 1A review, the Phase 1B review, which was done by shovel tests physically at the site, 408 of them did not encounter any resources, so no further action is necessary. The species study, so no endangered, threatened, or rare species observed during the field survey. The site does support potential habitat for one noted endangered bat species, the northern long-eared bat. And the prerequisite for that is that any clearing of trees can only happen between November 1 and March 3. for that is that any clearing of trees can only happen between November 1 and March 31st. So that's out of the endangered species review of the SECRE review. That's one of the parameters that came out of it. That's a very typical parameter. We've dealt with that one before. The northern long-eared bat is a common animal in the Hudson Valley. The wetland study, so the field delineated five separate wetlands within the campus, including the area where the driveway is proposed. Further consultation with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, which is the regulatory jurisdiction, is recommended for the impact mitigation. So we're affecting about .02 acre of wetlands, and they're federally regulated wetlands, so that, that's a good thing for the district. And this is normal course of action when you have to do any construction regarding an area with wetlands. And then the last slide that I have within the presentation is basically a simple flow chart of the secret process. So I presented this, or we presented this, at a meeting in November, I believe. But again, I just wanted to put in here just to reiterate the secret process. We do have a Type 1 action, but I also want to underscore and reiterate the importance of tonight's action of adopting lead agency, which is basically Step 2 of the secret process, even though we have been doing all the legwork within the species, the wetlands, the traffic and things of that nature. So I think I covered it all. I appreciate everybody's patience with that, and thank you to the board and to the district for having us. Lita, do you have anything to add to, to my presentation?
Chris, I would like to add just a little bit in terms of the driveway. So the work that I did was I reached out to Altera's, our security co, who gave this a huge green light, because they don't like the single exits in and having this as a, a real security enhancement. I spoke with the new chief of police. He also saw this as a very positive step, and our fire folks too, as well. So again...
A significant amount of time with our legal counsel, with Aris, with Jared, with CPL, to make sure that the SECRE process is being followed to the letter of the law, because there's no wiggle room, like I said before. So one of the things related to SECRE is that you can't separate projects in order to do a SECRE. If there's, for example, we were looking at building, a building on the site of AMD. That was what we're thinking about doing. But we had to reiterate to legal that we're not trying to avoid SECRE for the whole project. We just don't know, and we cannot be certain that a bond is going to pass, and also that is going to result in an additional building. So in order to avoid this looking like a segmentation of SECRE, which is not allowable, we have in the resolution the language potential related to building, a new building on AMD campus. So that's why that is in here. So I just want to make it clear that the only thing that the board is approving or disapproving or voting on tonight is that you're going to be the lead agency, which you have to establish, and it's natural that the school district would be it since it's a, it's a school district project. And then that starts the process of reaching out to local interested parties, interested parties and other parties. So that includes the, that includes the town, that includes the highway department, different agencies. So that needs to happen within a certain timeframe. So literally, I, I think they're going to press the button to send the letters out, or whatever they're going to do, email or mail, immediately after this meeting, in order to meet the timeline of the 23rd of April, of which, by which, we have to adopt the budget. So that's why this is here. So again, the language at the bottom, or the second whereas, is speaking to the potential of a bond, and it's very tentative. It doesn't say that we're going to do it. It just says we're currently contemplating it. So we're not voting on that, but we are voting on moving the AMD driveway along, because we know based on the information that was given to us, that that's the first step in even creating a building there on the site. So that's why we're trying to make sure that we take care of this first, so that we can move forward with the bond development process, potential bond.
And I want to thank the level of legal attention, multiple lawyers, looking at every word, every statement, a lot of conversation on what was potential, what could be, why was segmentation important, again, on that expedited timeline, given the green light we got from the board on this. So we thank everybody for their work on that. There was a lot over the break, too.
Okay. All right, is that it? Are we good? Are we good for questions? Okay. All right. I think I will kick us off, if that's okay. A couple of clarification questions, sort of a couple of philosophical questions. Do we know approximately what percentage the 6.3 million is in terms of an increase?
6.02.
6.02 percent. So the levy increase would be 6.02 percent? Okay. And then I wanted to confirm that the 181 million proposed budget includes no new positions, no extras for clubs, no additional after-school programming?
So we are planning on taking a deeper dive with the after-school programs, because we know that a portion, a large portion was funded with stimulus funds that end the school year, which is the Boys and Girls Club. So right now, that, that number is not in there, which was about $400,000 per year. That number is not in here. There are other after-school programs in the budget. Nothing that was in the budget from last year has been taking, from this year has been taken out for next year. So all the after, like the STAR program at AMD, there's a lot. We were in Roosevelt yesterday. There's so many programs, after-school programs, in that building. All of those are still rolling over into next year's budget.
But this, this doesn't include any ads right now, or does it?
I don't believe so. But again, I, I don't want to commit to that yet, because we do have to have a separate meeting that I'm trying to do before the next, before Saturday, to make sure we're capturing and identifying where these after-school programs are and how we can maybe fund it differently.
Okay. And then Saturday is really sort of where we get into the nitty-gritty. This is for Rob and Annie. Like, this code is going to be adjusted like this, and we want to move a personnel, you know, pay for a new intake person here, and so we're going to have that, and then we can offset this because we need one less person over here. Adjustments are made by that. It goes line by line. You'll see the process. So stay tuned for that. I think, I just want to confirm my, well, I'm going to go back to ESSER. I guess, you know, we've heard through several board meetings that our ESSER funds are ending. I think it would be helpful for me to understand, is the intention of this 181 million proposed budget to absorb everything to the extent that the ESSER funds have been paying for programming and positions? Is the intention of this proposed budget to absorb those ESSER funds and continue those forward? Or are we, is there a list of things that, like, we should be prepared to say goodbye to?
So right now, you could prepare to say goodbye to Boys and Girls Club. You can prepare to say goodbye, which we don't have to, it's a one-time expense, for the air conditioning as part of the EPC. The items that are rolling over are salaries. And the total amount of those salaries, not including benefits, is 1.4 million dollars.
Okay. I think it would be helpful, at least for me, to have an understanding of what salaried positions are included within that 1.4 million?
So it's teachers, teaching assistants, remedial reading teachers, math teachers, elementary teachers, and administrator.
Okay.
Wait, can you, can you?
We'll get, like, a more specific breakdown of that?
I'm, I'm, I didn't, sorry, I missed. I was trying to write that down. So you're saying, based on the ESSER funds roll, stopping, the federal funds and the other funds, there's 1.4 million in staff that is part of the 181? Or no, that, that would?
It is part of the 181.
It is. So we're keeping that staff even though the, the funding is rolling off?
Yeah, and so this year, we added, put back into the budget for '23, '24, because it staggered. Some of the ESSER funds are, are APR, ARP, APR. Anyway, they are, were rolling off in this school year, or last school year. So in this budget, we added 1.6 million dollars to this year's budget due to some of those grants rolling over in last year. So in total, in the past two years, it would be a 3 million amount that we are putting into our budget in '22, '23, '23, '24, and '24, '25. And again, that does not include benefits.
Okay. I think, I think going, you know, as we go into this budget season, really to have that broken down will help. Me, I don't speak for the other trustees, but it would definitely be helpful for me.
And Catherine, that, just to clarify, so that's again for, just for what was added into this year's budget from the last year's federal funds that came off, in addition to the ones that are in this year?
Got it.
Got it.
Okay. And then, you know, going back to the Slide 8 issue, I just want to confirm my understanding of this. So, and you correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is, like, we're not losing a revenue source of approximately $9.5 million. We're just not getting another increase that we've enjoyed of $9.5 million, like, we have been fortunate enough to receive the last few years. Which, and then, so along those same lines, I think it will be helpful for me going forward to analyze, because we have utilized those funds to add a number of positions each year. So I think it will help me to understand what is it, what are the positions that we've been increasing with that, that, I don't know what else called, like, that bumper sort of pushing us up, right? What have we been using that for? And then, you know, I think, like, as we've talked, we've heard, we've had some great presentations all year long, sort of setting us up for this moment of, like, you know, pie in the sky, what ideally do you need, right? And so I think it would be helpful, as we're analyzing this, to understand, like, you know, what's also on that list of the stuff that, in this 181 million rollover budget, we ideally think we need, but we're not going to get to that. So I think that would be helpful as well to have. And then, you know, I did see, I saw, I guess I just didn't understand the funding for the, the HVAC. There was a capital of maybe seven something million and then budget 1.8 million? Did I see that right?
Correct.
Yes. I just, I don't understand that break. Can you just, maybe I'm just not understanding it, but?
No, so...
Can you give me a couple sentences about that?
Sure. The AMD HVAC, if you recall, was part of the bond originally. And we spoke about a while ago, putting it into the '24, '25 budget. So that is going to be funded primarily with capital reserves. That's a 7.7 or 7.3. And then the remaining 6.95 of the budget is going to fund it, the AMD HVAC project.
Okay.
The total cost is 8.8. So we're just, we're just using a majority of that payment, which we were planning to do anyway, as part of the potential bond. So we're just using the capital reserves earlier and using 7.7 of that as part of the capital reserve. And we still have, like, 1 point something remaining after we pay for the AMD driveway with budgetary funds and after we pay for the safety items on Jared's list.
Okay. When you're saying budgetary funds, you're referring to the 6.9 million line that we have year after year after year?
Yes.
Okay. And that's for capital expenditures only?
Yep, yep.
Got it. Understood. Okay, I think that's it for me. I'm going to use the ladies room and turn it over to Christine.
I don't have any questions right now. Does anybody else have any questions who hasn't had a chance to ask any first? Go ahead.
I have most of a, mostly a clarifying question about the HVAC. That's AMD for this year. And we had a lot of questions from the community in the start of the school year about HVAC in other buildings. Can you just remind me what is happening with those? So I know why they're not included, like, why we're not working on them right now? Because we're already working on them?
So Jared can easily answer those questions. That's a great question. Thank you.
It is a good question. So we're doing a significant amount of work adding air conditioning in a couple different buildings. So, and that's part of the EPC work, the performance contract work. So, third floor of high school, all the classrooms on the third floor of the high school, that includes the 29 hallway and the annex wing, all have new univentilators that also have air conditioning. And I'm also happy to report that those units are all up and running, ready to go, right? So controls are done, units are installed, the AC units were fired up over the Christmas break, and, and we, we went through the commissioning process and everything. They are ready to go. Coming up this summer, we're going to be doing, it's 51 total, split amongst the two buildings. One of them has one additional. It's about half and half. And I don't, I forget which one, but Claremont is getting about, you know, a half of those univentilators in classrooms, new univentilators, also with air conditioning installed. And then Brookside is getting the other half. So we concentrate, the reason that we're doing those buildings is that the univentilators that we're replacing in both Claremont and Brookside were installed either in the mid to early 50s for some portion of the building and 1960s in the other portion of the building. So we're, we were concentrating on the oldest univentilator equipment to improve the ventilation as part of the EPC. And then we, we used the ESSER funds that we were just talking about to augment that with the air conditioning. So that's, and those are the majority of the univentilators. I don't remember the number at the high school, but I want to say it was 23 or, don't quote me on that, but I think it was in the low 20s, the number of classrooms that we got done at the high school. So that's the work that's, that's being done this current school year. And it's a significant amount of work that's going to be, happen over the summer. So when we come back in the fall, the new univentilators will, will be installed in Brookside and Claremont. And I'm going to anticipate that most of the air conditioning units will be installed. I can't guarantee that all of them be installed. I think some of that work is going to probably spill into the early fall to get them all up and running completely, fully commissioned, all the controls going and everything like that. So, but that's, that's the work that we're doing right now.
In addition to that, Jared, too, you, you were taking a look at service lines, right? Electrical feeds, load. So even if someone wanted to put in a room air conditioner, you know, you, you could do that. You could just do that out of your funds, which can be a little bit more complicated. Some people say, why can't we just go out and buy them? Well, the electricity load can't handle it. So...
Right. And also to add on to that as well, anything new that we're doing, we, we're also adding air conditioning. So for example, we're about to, to start on April 1st, we're going to start the Park Edition project. So we're adding four classrooms on top of the, the pre-K addition in the back. Those rooms and offices will have air conditioning as well. And then I'm working with CPL right now on design for the Brookside Edition, which is?
Six classrooms?
I think it's six classrooms, and some other spaces. Those will also all have air conditioning. So that, that's what's kind of, that's what's in progress right now.
Okay. And then, like, all the rest of the, like, all the rest of Park is all set? I'm just probably forgetting things, so I'm asking for a refresher.
Not, not all of Park is, is all set. So there was, still will be remaining some portions of the, of the buildings that still have to have air conditioning installed, if, if that's what the board's desire is, right? So there, there will be other work coming up in the future to do those kinds of things, you know, and that, we'll have to figure out how they're going to be funded.
Does that include classrooms that would have, that would need to have air conditioning?
Yes, there are, there are still classrooms in the district that, that will still need to have air conditioning. Remember, like, even the high school, we just talked about the high school. We only touched the third floor, you know? We would love to do the second floor, but there wasn't enough money to do, do the second floor as well. So we were trying to get the, you know, obviously the worst rooms up on the third floor.
And then Roosevelt's?
Roosevelt is pretty much complete, but it's all window units at Roosevelt. But every classroom at Roosevelt has air conditioning. We, we actually completed that out of the regular operating budget last year. We got the last couple of rooms at Roosevelt done last year.
And that can be, and, that could be a revenue source if the board decides. Now, the electrical feeds have been added and done. But it's a significant, huge improvement. And I think it was a very wise choice on part of the Board of Education to use the federal stimulus money towards this, which we mentioned. So that's a huge piece of this. And then the end... So that's a huge piece of this, and then the energy performance contract. So it'll make a big, but think about our summer school program. We have a ton of kids involved in that, so having AMD AC will be a huge, not only for the regular school year, but also for the summer program for kids.
Yeah, I was even thinking, like, the summer camp, they use the schools.
Yeah.
And it's very hot some days. Yeah. Thank you so much for walking me through that.
So I just want to clarify, too, that the, the omission of this building for HVAC and the EPC was because that the univentilators that we were trying to address were not old enough to justify a savings by putting it in the EPC. It wasn't allowable. So what we did do is take $14 million worth of work and have no impact on the tax levy. So the buildings that are being impacted with the increased air conditioning, again, we were deliberate in trying to include the high school, because since I've been here, everybody talks about the third floor, and obviously there's summer school in the high school. So that, they say is just egregious as to how it is, how hot it is, even during the regular school year, towards the end in June. So we were very deliberate in using the stimulus funds, which amounted to $4.4 million towards this project, to ensure that we covered those items. Other items that he's speaking about, like, at the elementary schools, those were justifiable under the EPC. But the only way we could address the additional expense at the high school was to add the stimulus funds. So that benefits us also, because that was a one-time expense.
Right. I think it's a great question.
I just have a question in general, in preparation for more information. In addition, I, we were provided the grant funding and all the different variations of the different Cliffs Lash for the '22, '23 school year as well. I know a lot of the grant funding was, as you pointed out, funding recurring expenses like salaries, especially around mental health, and also some multiple literacy positions as well. So in addition to the Esser grants, I'm wondering if we can also get a breakdown of any grants that are outside of that particular category, because I know there are a lot of grant-funded initiatives in the district. So I'm wondering if we can make that a part of our, educating us during the budget workshops for, you know, all the needs that are there now, or the needs that will be projected down the road, when we have to consider different salaries and positions that we have.
So the, we can certainly provide you with that, but the competitive grants are small in nature. So they don't have a significant impact. For example, the mental health grant, there's, that, that is supposed to be towards additional staff. So it's not as if we're supplanting at this moment. It's supposed to be surplus. And we're still working on that process. I've been meeting with Kim and her team. So we can give you an estimate of what that looks like, but we're still determining how the funds that we get for this school will be utilized. And the non-competitive grants, so these are Title I, Title II, Title III, Title IV, UPK, 848 million and a 2.1 million, those are the amounts where most of the salaries are in, the big numbers. And so just to give you an example, when you look at that line on the graph, or the bar that says "other," UPK is included in that. And that amount is $1 million now for next year. When I first got here, it was like $400,000. So the amount of money that the district is having to supplement the UPK program has been steadily increasing. So just in the two years alone, we will see that number going up by $200,000. So it's not just OCC. We offset salaries that are not or cannot be covered with the 2.9 million that we're getting from the two grants. But the title funds, we don't anticipate, anticipate any decreases. We just, it's usually just status quo. We looked and determined that we've been getting slight increases, and there haven't been any decreases, so. But I can certainly provide you with that graph.
Thank you.
Or that chart.
A couple clarifying questions, and I guess helping to frame this. So if you look at the year-to-year change, kind of from the slide where you were talking about, I guess the one before, the one, Slide 7, we're kind of, what the, what the drivers are in the rollover budget. So if you look at salary, benefits, transportation, and BOCs, and say to maintain what we have for those programs, those are about $9.5 million.
Correct.
If I add those up. So that $9.5 million is, that's your role forward to keep what you have today. The additional state aid being only 1.3 million means you have to make some decisions about what you're going to do, and part of that is, is what's your tax levy cap, but then part of that's the budget process that we're going to go through and be talking about. But last year, I was really slammed by the, I think it was about like $4 million, $4.5, almost $5 million, and I think it was the healthcare contributions that went up last year. And this year, it's 3.6 in benefits, right? So I guess that's healthcare and pensions, right? So the pensions modulate, but that's another big hit that we're taking in a given calendar year. And part of that's probably some inflationary things and all that, but these are like, sitting at the board table, these are monster hits, right?
We're at .02 acre is a, is a big deal in that. I believe with our civil team, if you get over a half acre, then certain other things trigger. But, but you're right, we have to coordinate with the Army Corps of Engineers and their team, and we don't know who we're going to get from that team, and, and things may change. But, but yeah, that's, but I just want to assure people that constructing in wetlands is a typical thing. It's not necessarily an ideal thing, but when you have a certain level of property and certain buildable areas of the property, and limited, or limited, you know, size of the property in a sense, you know, you got to make these concessions, so.
Right. And like, my understanding is in front of Sleepy Hollow High School, there is a retention pond, because when they built and did all these things behind there, they had to move wetlands around. And so where you want the wetlands to go, sometimes you have choice, and, and I think you just have to be flexible. So what we're putting on drawings, I think, is to be continued, if I'm hearing you correctly.
That is correct. Yep, yep. The true, true design of everything that's going to be submitted and all that is still yet to come, and the design of it would have user group meetings with Jim and his team, and everybody, you know, so that is still, we're still on the conceptual level, so.
So I would love it if we didn't have a swamp in front of a new school building. I'd just say that.
I imagine that's where you will go, and yes. Correct, correct, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I, I will have to add on a good note, Jim Menahan received a call from a gentleman from the New York State Department of Transportation, who really did read the board resolution. He called immediately.
That's great.
He was coming down to a site visit. So again, while we're talking about that driveway in terms of safety for this campus, this was a great action on part of the board, and it took the immediate attention of the New York State Department of Transportation, which is great.
She was showing the potholes, too, by the way. And I'm actually, I'm actually not, not, not serious about that while he's here to point out 133.
That's a long story going on.
True, but it's, you know, it is relevant if you got the air someone, so.
I think Mary's point's very relevant, though. Part of the reason, and I'm glad the board supported doing the resolution, is it gives it a different level of heft, and I'm glad. Getting the state transportation department to respond on something is not an insignificant thing.
It was pretty phenomenal.
So I think it's great, so.
Thank you, Jim.
He's in the back.
Yes, he's in the back. They reached out specifically to Jim, so I am thrilled.
That's great to hear.
It's great to hear.
I did have a quick question. I know we talked about this last year, about possibly moving to the Westchester-Putnam plan for...
I mentioned that when I was presenting.
That's what I, I was like, I think there was something about that, but I don't, I don't remember.
Yeah, I mentioned that when I was presenting. The process to get it approved through the Putnam-Northern Westchester Consortium Board is well entailed. We did reach out to them, and there was one thing that they were wanting us to be certain about, is that we had to abide by the working spouse rule? Yes. So our plan currently does have that, so that, they said, was an initial hurdle for many school districts not being able to move into their plan. Quite frankly, the process itself involves a lot of time, and a lot of data, and a lot of information. So again, we didn't have the time to do that this school year. We did start initial conversations. We can certainly focus our attention on that for the upcoming school year. We did, I didn't lose sight of it. But it's a process, and then there's no guarantee that we get approved, because they actually want to see our experience. Now NYSHIP is able to pull out the experience individual carry or, or individual agencies. In the past, they were not able to do that, and they did not necessarily make that information readily available. But it's my understanding that it's more simple to get that information from NYSHIP. But the last time that we tried to go back to Putnam-Northern Westchester BOCs, they shut us down.
Yeah.
Like, they just shot us down. Because of our experience.
Based on the experience, which now they're going to see in the new one, yeah.
So we had an increase in one year when it was very clear, and with the onset of the tax cap being self-funded, we had a 40% increase that we didn't budget for, or plan for. And we, at that time, we weren't in a tax cap environment. So there's no way that we can be self-insured again. So the reason why we went to NYSHIP, we saved a lot of money for one, and number two, they can't deny us based on our experience.
Right.
So it's, and then the other thing you have to understand, is a lot of discussions with the staff, the unions, like, that's something that not, cannot happen overnight. So we need to be clear about what is afforded with what is currently Putnam-Northern Westchester program, and what they have now. So we cannot make any unilateral decisions necessarily, and we wouldn't anyway if we didn't have to, without having conversations with our unions. And that simply was too big of a hurdle this year, with the changeover in staff and administrators to accomplish.
So I, I think, though, the question is important, because, you know, every school district and school board in Westchester is looking at health insurance, well, what are you doing about that? And I haven't been down that road myself, too, that even SwissSHIP, which is the other organization that's out there, wanted like a couple of million investment even to enroll. And then depending upon, you could have a series of years, particularly if your base is small, you could have really serious medical issues in there, that that board of trustees is basically overseeing. And, you know, we're in the public education business, not in the health business, and there are liabilities and concerns and issues along with that as well. So I would say globally, in the, you know, in the state and in the country, we have a, we have a crisis with how we manage healthcare. Let's be clear about that. But, and while one year you'll see NYSHIP going up, next year it could be something else, and there could be a level of catastrophic illnesses in the smaller consortiums that could drive insurance costs up, too. So this is a very tough conversation. And then, of course, you're talking about retiree health that is protected in some collective bargaining agreements, and a whole host of other things. So it needs to be very carefully managed and looked at. But it is a, a regular question that is being asked right now because of the increases that we're seeing. Right?
Just for clarification, is that, is that the same thing as us being self-insured? Is that different?
Yeah, or you can get a group of school districts that will self-insure, right, do themselves, or go to NYSHIP, which is one of the largest insurance insurers in the state of New York. They do a lot of police, cop, public employees, et cetera. Right?
I mean, my two cents on that process and those things, right? So I mean, self-insured puts you at high risk. We're not going back to self-insured. We were there and had that issue. Going to the state was the only real option at that time, because the Putnam-Northern Westchester BOCs Consortium wouldn't take us in because we had too much liability, and it would cost those districts more money.
Right.
However, trying to get into that program probably is better now than staying with the state, because as we saw last fall, and there was community, we talked about at the table here, and there was advocacy from the community, because those NYSHIP rates get set, and there is a political element to that at the end of the day. And there was a proposal from the governor, and the unions in the city, and it was an enormous change that got backpedaled a bit. That fund is more subject to those kinds of pressures than something that Putnam-Northern Westchester BOCs has. They have their costs from their providers and all that. So my two cents is, is like, the timeline to get to that program is 18 months, or whatever it is, and to get that, we should start that, because I think there is a vote that has to happen by the members of the consortium to take you in or not.
Yes.
So even if we got the unions to agree, and everybody to line up, we still have to go before them, and they could say no again.
100%.
But at some point, I think we need to try and get back into that program.
Right, right. And then a whole other... And then a whole other level, too, Alita, right, is this whole concept of health insurance accounts, like, is, which, which is a whole other area of looking at how you fund health insurance that I know our state organizations are also looking at.
So I just want to mention two things to your point, Frank. Uh, if you recall, right before the end of the school year and right before the boat, the budget was adopted, NISHIP reduced their rates. So the one thing I want to point out is that we did reduce the budget in twen, this year based on the reduced rates. So the increase that you're seeing is based on the increase from the reduced rate to the new rate, or actually, yeah, the reduced rate to the new rate. So there is some of that experience happening in a 23, 24 school year, but as far as it being political, absolutely, because they, I've never seen NISHIP reduce their rates after they established them, um, in, in, um, January or December. So that, that was crazy. Um, but it did, it, we did reduce as a result, so you're seeing a larger increase as a result of that. Um, I wanted to say something else, and I forgot.
They also, they work off of the municipal government calendar, which is different from the school year calendar, right? So we can see a rate increase.
Yes, calendar year.
So stability in one year could be a problem. You could get hit with something because, well, that's what we were seeing was as they were basically proposing initially a larger increase at the end of the day.
Right.
And that was the healthcare industry lobby in Albany trying to move the needle on stuff related to pandemic costs at the end of the day, that then had pushed back from essentially, I know Senator Harkam pushed back on that, not only for school districts, but for some of the unions involved.
I've, I've got, um, anyone else? I got some rapid-fire ones. All right? All right. Jared, HVAC on the, on the line item for the proposed 46 classrooms and, and so other, is, will the whole school be covered by it, or some, some will not get that HVAC improvement?
The goal is to do this entire building, yes.
Whole building, okay.
Only instructional spaces.
Got it, thank you. Um, and, uh, I'm sorry, I forgot your name.
Chris.
Chris, right, hi, Chris. Yeah, I should remember that, there's a few Chris's. Um, okay, um, this may or may not be for you on the driveway because it's building off what Frank said. So if we pass the resolution and the driveway, we decide not to do the driveway, for whatever reason. I know, I know the recommendation is do it regardless, but there's no penalty for us going through SECRE and then saying, oh, sorry, just kidding, we're not doing the driveway, right? There's no financial penalty.
Well, you spend money on the process.
You, so there is a, there's a charge to do the SECRE process?
That, that's correct. So there's no penalty, per se, what to do the traffic study, to do the species study, to do the delineation of wetland.
Our consultants.
Yeah, yeah, but...
We, we've already agreed to that payment, those consultants to do that SECRE work. We greenlighted that a while ago, so.
Yeah, no, I meant that from the state. The state says, oh, oh, you didn't go forward with it.
No, 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 yeah.
There's no penalty from that, okay.
And there's no additional expense for them doing the work. We already...
Yeah, no, that's fine.
That's part of the SECRE process.
Okay. Now, second part of this, in the, you have here at the cap line, 5.5 million, give or take, right, to, is, uh, let me make sure I got my numbers right, to do it, yeah, uh, no, 4.6. If we fund it, and same question, decide, you know what, something comes up, the town doesn't like it, someone, you know, is not happy about it, something comes up in the SECRE process, I guess, a positive find, right? A positive finding is not a good thing, right? You want negative, right? So you want a, you want a positive find. Something comes up, what happens to that if we fund it and we decide not to do it?
So you're talking about, first of all, we would have to make a decision, um, before the budget vote, I mean, the budget adoption. So on April 23rd, which is the board adopting the budget, right before that is going to be the SECRE. So we are under the pressure, under the impression after conversations with CPO that there is not going to be any positive findings or declaration, that it's going to be negative. But we still have to go through the process. So in order for it to be as part of the budget that's approved by the board, you have to have that SECRE on the board agenda right before you approve the, um, budget. So just say for, for example, if we find that, and we would definitely have those conversations earlier than the date of the budget adoption, but if we find that we don't want to do it, then it comes out of the budget in that meeting, and then we adopt a lower budget.
But what if we put it in the budget and then we decide, for whatever reason, we're not going to build the building up, if something comes up afterwards, what happens to...
It goes to fund balance.
Goes to fund balance, okay. So that we're not locked into it 100% if we fund it, and for some whatever reason we decide we don't do it, it goes into, we pass it in the budget, and it just goes into the fund balance, and you could use it as per whatever the statutory allowance is on.
We can't use it. It just goes to fund balance, and it goes back to undesignated fund balance.
Okay.
So you'll have a 4% increase in your undesigned it, um, so that will leave you about 8% undesigned it. The other thing, um, also, that would delay the bond because we understand, based on the study, that this has to happen in order for us to move forward with any plans for AMD.
Right, but, but my con, question is, for example, if we decided that we weren't going to build the new building there, I'm, I'm just trying to get at to make sure if we put 4.6 million towards the driveway, phase one, and decide phase two, phase three isn't going to happen.
Yeah, that's...
That money just goes into the, as you indicated.
Yeah, but the 4.6 has nothing to do with phase two.
No, I know that, I'm just saying, where does that money go? And you're saying that...
It just goes to the undesigned fund balance.
Got it.
We can only spend money on capital projects that are approved by the voters.
Yeah, no, I understand, okay. So Chris's one maybe back for you then. There was the finding, though, of all the research you've done, the consultant work, et cetera, traffic study, regardless if we build a building up there or not, we should do the, we should do this driveway to alleviate all the other stuff that we found, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, good, all right, so that's that on that.
And, and just to add to that, Rob, the parking that's, that's spilling off onto the side roads to people's houses today that we've heard from a lot of the community, you have another parking lot there now, so.
Over 100 spaces, so we're being a good neighbor.
A lot of that, not all of it, would be off of that, so.
Yeah, I, I know, I understand. I'm just saying, we passed a resolution tonight, there are still, you know, there are people that came to the November meeting, other, like, like, oh, you're building the thing, like, we don't, I'm just saying, it doesn't lock us in, per se, if whatever happens, okay?
Can I ask a clarifying question to your clarifying questions?
What?
Um, I'm under the impression that if we, once we pass that budget and we say, and this is included in the budget, that that money, we can't just simply change our mind about spending the money. If the town comes in, there's some reason we can't because something, you know, does come up where we can't spend the money, then we can't spend that money, and then it would go there. But we can't, like, in September, say, you know what, never mind, we don't want to, we don't want to build the road, move that money over, or can we?
We're not required to build it, but we cannot spend it on something else. So it has to go to undesigned fund balance.
Thank you, and thank you, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Let's see, uh, just, just, I think this is something you asked, Catherine, that's 6%. That 6% that we just talked about a few minutes ago was the calculated increase in that tax levy, right? The pot. That is not the potential tax levy percentage if we left everything that is. Like, last year we passed, what, was a zero, right?
Zero.
That's, so that's six, is the sixth a new zero as it stands today, or is it not?
No.
Okay.
So that's why you have to look at that slide, because the zero is artificial in the fact that, uh, we are supplementing the zero. So we're supplementing the zero by taking money from the capital reserve. We're supplementing the zero by taking money from our unencumbered fund balance. So we have to continue to find that money because we didn't raise any levy. So in the last, in 24, 25, what's being proposed, to Frank's point, the additional $9 million in rollover that's related to salary and that's also related to, um, benefits, that negative nine million is basically what we have to make up to pay for the salary and benefits because we only getting anything outside of, um, the levy and, and just state aid. And this is just not foundation aid, this, all the aid categories, we only have 1.3 million to fill, in essence, a $10 million gap. So we have to utilize the ERS reserves to make up for the gap. We have to use, we have to increase the tax levy based on the tax levy limit, though that obviously will require further conversation. But yes, that 6% represents a 6% increase on the tax levy, not a zero. One thing that we can talk about, and we will research this further, is where we want to be in between that, because either you get additional revenue outside of the tax levy, that's what prevents it from going up, but the, the thing you don't want to do, again, is you use, uh, reserves all the time because you have to continue to find and put it back, and then you have to double it because you base that amount that you used last year, but then you're, you're skyrocketing expenses, it's still, you have to replace the hole for the current year, and then you have to add with reserves for the new year. So it just compounds itself. So that's why having a zero, because if you look at 22, 23, 24, there was no increase to the tax levy. The only way this works without any cuts is that we do a 6 million, we utilize ERS reserves, we utilize TRS reserves, and we utilize capital reserves.
Yeah, I guess, and I'm sorry if I didn't phrase my question more articulate. If this was May, when's the vote, May 18th? This were May 18th as of today, and we didn't do it, and we adopted this budget as is. Last year, the community was voting on what would be a 0%. Are you saying that if this were May 18th today and we had adopted it, the community would be voting on a 6%? I'm trying to understand where the starting point is. Are we at 6% as of today?
Correct, yes, yes.
What's today, the 28th? Today it's 20, it's 6%, it's not zero, it's 6.
The levy, not your tax rate, but your levy.
Okay.
Your levy, not your tax rate.
And just, and just for the record, the, the community does not vote on the, um, tax levy increase. They vote on the budget.
Right.
Um, the way the district funds it is strictly the board's control. They're only budgeting, they're only voting on the dollar amount, they're not voting on a tax levy increase. Because as you know, um, the actual tax levy, um, tax levy isn't set until after the budget vote.
Do we, do we have an anticipation of what the limit's going to be?
It's 6%.
Okay, got it, right, right.
Okay, and...
Why is it so much higher than it's been in the past?
Because of the capital.
Capital exclusions.
Capital exclusions. And yet you're funding it through a reserve.
And you have some assessment changes.
And you had assessment changes, et cetera, right?
Well, I just want to clarify with the assessment changes, that determines the tax rate. So typically, we do not talk about tax rate, but in this instance, as we go closer to next Saturday, we want to take a closer look at what the potential tax rate is going to be because we're considering such a significant increase in the levy. As I mentioned before, the tax rate doesn't reflect necessarily the tax levy increase. So the tax rate increase doesn't always match the tax levy increase by percentages. Um, you can see, it's actually in the budget books, been there for years. Um, there's a page. I don't speak to it because ultimately the tax rate is determined by the assessors in the different, um, towns. So they sit and they determine what town is going to get the portion of the levy, and it also is based on assessed values, it's also based on, um, the equalization rate. So I don't have any control over that.
My taxes, well, how's, what's my rate? Um, so we would always, with lots of caveats, explain, this is the levy limit, and this is what your rate could be depending upon your municipality and your equalization rate because that contextualize the conversation for many folks. So we're going to look into that this year for folks.
Great. And this last is a sw, question slash quick comment. Uh, on the capital projects, they all look, you know, at first glance, worthy. Um, Mary, I know, I have, I think others brought up as well around space, so I'm just going to just bring it up again as we go into budget season. As, as we talked about this capital improvement plan, AKA the bond, one of the things that have come up is, it's, is that, you know, it's five, six years out, how to resolve the space issues today, you know, a year from now, not five, six years from now. So I'm just wondering if we will see, uh, at some, as part of this proposed, it, it, capital and/or in the budget, and I know you're working very hard to find creative ways, I know you've looked at other, you know, you've mentioned you looked at other places, you, you know, you looked at other solutions, but i, is there a 2024, 2025 solution proposed to solve some of the spacious shoes that we know we have today in, in the district?
Well, I, I will say making the current spaces air-conditioned will be a big step in the right direction, uh, so I just put it out there. But in terms of tweaks we can do and minor adjustments, but will there be a significant way of looking at it? I, I just don't see it this way. Uh, but ACing them, people will be very happy. I was noticing my two high school students when we were talking about it, their heads nodding.
And I'm not poo-pooing the AC, but the reality is it doesn't create more actual physical space. Uh, we know there's, you know, social work going on in hallways and classrooms, so I'm just...
You have to provide sewer, you have to provide water, you have to submit all your plans to the state education department, you have to clear zoning, you have to go through SECRE. It's a, it's like building and extension. It, they made it very different than what folks in my age or generation would have looked at in terms of how they were meant.
So I just want to point out, too, um, the, the quickest path to get what we want is to get the, um, vote for the bond. So we are looking at ways, for example, you know that we are looking to expand 400. Um, we have to stay there for at least another three years because there's nowhere else for us to go, and the lease expires June 30th. So we are looking at opportunities to utilize some spaces from the buildings into 400 exec with the additional space on the first floor. So that you will see in 24, 25. And speaking with the fiscal advisor team this afternoon before this meeting, one thing to point out, that in 25, 26, because we delayed this project, there still is scope, there's scope there of whatever we want it to be. So right now, the scope in 24, 25 is 14 million. So if we kept that for 25, 26, that scope could be 14 million or some other number, but that's a placeholder that we can utilize to add classroom space, whatever our priorities are, as we look to, um, plan ahead. So we already know that there's no, again, there's nothing happening related to the bond, even if it's approved in 24, 25, the borrowing would not start in 25, 26. So there's another opportunity to get there to use the 6.9 again for another project that we would have done with the bond that we know we cannot do because we delayed the bond, and we know it's not going to get approved until the following year, and then the borrowing is that following year. So it does open up an opportunity to look at what can we do in 25, 26 within the budget to increase space if possible. So that, that's, the biggest way to get to where we want to get to is getting the bond approved because the, the gap, when we don't do it in that year, just extends the project longer for another year, beyond the one and a half years that it requires for SED approval and the building of the actual space.
Alita, correct me if I'm wrong, but right now we have, um, funding for an additional 73 spaces for our UPK program, and we don't have the space to house that. And, and a meeting that we had yesterday with Jared, we walked through Roosevelt, we were working with Head Start, and we actually, you know, and following the board's impetus about what are the instructional needs of Roosevelt, we came up with a, a really great plan of being able to house a program, expand upon a three-year-old program, uh, bring in the additional, um, 73 spots, and yet move the district office there. So, and again, to Alita's point about additional money, I, I don't know, Chris, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but a portable is a half a million dollars? Yeah, by the time just you... Yeah, by the time just you, I've been down that road.
At least.
Yes. It's a significant amount of money, and then it's for temporary use. But do you look at other buildings, and are there places we could rent space to move a classroom, to move a program? Do you involve transportation? I mean, we are trying those routes, Rob. We've actually gotten, I've spoken to Kim a lot, you know, we've reached out to WCC here in Acadia because they have classrooms, but it involves who, what population, what program would we move there, what are the transportation costs, and does it work for kids' schedules? So, point well taken, it's on our radar, and we are looking at all of the above.
And it's 72 spots, and it's $720,000 that this year we left on the table because we didn't have space. So just say Park didn't have room. We could move some of the pre-K students to that building and free up space in Park. I'm not looking at the enrollment projections for that building, but again, what we're seeing is that we can enhance the lives of three-year-olds and four-year-olds and provide wraparound services with the funding that's coming from the money that we're not tapping into that was already approved by the state, which is $720,000, $10,000 per kid for a full-day program. And then the three-year-olds would be paid for through Head Start, and they would have a full-day program.
So I think it's a great question, it's got a long answer, and we've been doing a lot of work behind the scenes on it. Thank you.
I have one more AC-related question. So I feel like I have a good understanding of the impact of moving the middle school HVAC stuff from the bond to the budget, like what that does to the bond, right? It just reduces the amount of money that we're going to borrow. I don't have a good idea of what the impact would be of, on the budget, of keeping the HVAC in the bond instead of this year's budget. Because it would, like, obviously, you would just reduce, but like, my question is, I guess, how would that impact the percentage of money? Because I know we're talking about, that's part of tax cap, like, because it's capital projects, so that would impact the potential tax cap if we didn't do the HVAC. Can you, if you can't explain it right now, or if I'm being unclear, just know that that's something I'm curious about as we move discussions forward.
So again, somebody had the question, what's the 7 million and what's the 1 million? The 1 million is coming from the budget, and the 7 million is coming from capital reserve. So if you take out the AMD project, you're only saving 1.3. Actually, you're not saving. You're reducing your capital line by the 1.3 that's being funded with general funds. So that will reduce your tax levy limit also, but you would only save from the budget itself. You would actually reduce the budget for that capital line from the 6.9, and you subtract that 1.3, that's what you would be saving.
And you can't use that money for staff?
No, you cannot.
Right, right.
Because the tax levy is going to reduce, so that revenue goes away. So if you try to say, oh, well, let's use that 1.3, not put it into the transfer of capital, let's increase staff or pay for staff, the tax, because you took it out, it's going to reduce the tax levy. So that same 1 million dollars that you think you're saving, it's going to reduce the levy by another million dollars.
By that much.
So it'll be 5 percent for the levy, but you don't have any HVAC.
Right.
And you just reduce your levy by a million dollars.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question for NOT right now. Just, it's something I'm curious about while we're talking about budget things. I'm wondering how ADA compliant or accessible our buildings are, and if they're not, how much it would cost to get them there? And again, you do not have to answer this right now.
I'm just going to give you a quick answer, because the reason why I'm able to do that, because we're trying to figure out what would happen with Roosevelt. That was part of the expedited review yesterday, because we need to know whether or not, because it came up with the board, as to what do we have to do with Roosevelt if we move over there with the staff, and do we have to meet any ADA compliance? So in order to determine that, we need to figure out and provide the scope to the architects so they can tell us if there's going to be a need to add an ADA component. My understanding, and I'll defer to CPL because I think it's a very simple response, is that you're not required to do anything until you go into the building and build something new. So anything that's not ADA compliant, and we're not touching that building, we are not required to make any changes.
My question is not around requirement, it's like, if we decided that this was something that we wanted to do, make all the buildings ADA compliant, how much would that cost us?
Yeah, I don't think we have that level of scope because we don't, the only scope that we really consider is, as we talked about before, is the, the, uh, FODA, uh...
Part of the BCS.
BCS, the Building Condition Survey.
The inability to, 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 to,
Thank you. Okay. Sorry?
They stuck it out.
They did.
Tax cap levy.
All right, we are coming to our first section in the agenda of public comment guidelines. This is on anything agenda or presentation related. We have one remaining audience member here with us, so we will take public comment from in-person audience members first. Do you have anything to share with us?
That would be me.
Yes, that would be you. And you know the drill, it's three minutes. You've got to state your name and your address. We can't talk about anything specifically related to students or staff. The floor is yours.
I would just like to say, Kim Jeffrey, I live at 100B Morningside Drive. That seems pretty low. Please, Policy Committee, please work on this because 10:30 at night. So I am here to represent Engineering Club parents, students, and volunteers. And this is in connection with budget talks, just in case you want to know why I'm talking about this. With some exceptions, I believe this club has been largely overlooked and underestimated. We are a district that has pivoted ourselves as a steam school. We have been extremely successful in many aspects of that. Our science research department is amazing, our arts, our theater groups, our music. And another important arm to this, I believe, is our Engineering and Robotics Club. To be clear, we have an engineer, we have engineering classes, and the club is basically an extension of that whole educational process. The Engineering Club is very different than most of our other clubs in many different ways. Some are similar in certain ways and different in others. This particular club takes everyone. There is no bar or way of trying to get in. Any child in Austin High School who wants to show up can show up once, can show up 10 times, can come, can be part of it. But it's also different in the place that it is a club that needs to pivot and receive and build and get equipment immediately. When it's build season, it is on. There can't be this kind of slow turnaround in terms of access. And I think that's part of why I'm here, too. These kids are learning how to wire, how to code, mechanical engineering, the ability to pivot and to problem solve, and to compete and teamwork. So there's a million different ways that they are learning and their education is being built on and expanded. I think that this club is extremely important to the district in terms of the abilities and expansions of education and extremely important to the community. You will have families that will come and move into this community for a strong and robust Engineering Club and classes. And not every school has it. We went to Worlds last year. That's amazing. It's amazing. And I don't think that this school board or the district really understands how big it was and how hard it was for them to do it. You all should go to a competition. At this time, the budget only covers their registration fees for three competitions and some busing. I'm here. Needs.
Okay, thank you so much. Thanks for sticking it out with us. There's no one else public in the audience, so we will now pivot to see if there's anyone virtually this evening with a hand raised who would like to make a comment. Okay. Are you able to bring her in? I know our tech is not functioning the way we would ideally like it to this evening, but we'll see what we get. Kristen, can you hear us? Hang on, hang on a sec. Are you there? Okay, now we can't hear you, but we can see you.
Was the voice, was the laptop muted?
Just bear with us. Give us thumbs up if you can hear us.
Can you hear me? I'll keep talking.
Oh, yes, we can.
Can you hear me? I'll keep talking. Yes, we can. Can you hear me? I'll keep talking. Yes, we can. Can you hear me?
Okay, I'm on.
Okay. Is echoing really good?
I'm in the matrix. Okay. Sorry, my brain couldn't process. All right, we're going to try this again. All right. Try now.
Try now.
Can you hear me?
Try now.
Can you hear me? Hear me?
Hang on one second. We can definitely hear you. But we also hear ourselves. Try, try again. Can you say your name?
This is Kristen.
What if we don't say anything? I can, this is Kristen Orpita.
All right, there's a little bit of an echo, but we're going to.
Okay, no problem. Yes, one of your board members has. Uh-huh, just kidding. All right, try to speak now.
Okay, how is this?
Try louder.
How is this?
Not great, but we'll try to make as best that we can.
Okay, I can try, and if it doesn't work, just stop me.
That's great, it's working.
Perfect.
Let's go quickly.
I'm Kristen Orpita, Crest Drive in Briar Cliff. Thank you all so much for the presentation, as always. I just wanted to chime in, as you were talking about possible expansion of seats and talking about three-year-old Head Start program, pre-K is something that's near and dear to my heart. It's what I do for a living in school district in Westchester. And I just have always wondered or hoped that Austin would consider the expansion of adding a special education preschool program under 4410 through New York State. And the reason I say that is their programs in Westchester County in particular are so limited, and we know that school districts can run a strong, solid, high-caliber program. And we know that Austin's UPK is a strong, solid, high-caliber program. So as a taxpayer, a parent, educator, it just breaks my heart that children who require special class support or integrated setting aren't able to access that within their home district. And I just would love to see that as something that's considered to be added. You know, from a budgetary standpoint, I'm always happy to talk further because I, you know, helped open programs in my own district. It's not as far out of reach as it sometimes seems to be when you really do the numbers. So if the space is there, I would love to see the district consider that.
Thank you very much for your comments, and thank you for sticking with us this evening as we struggled to make that work. Really appreciate it.
Absolutely, thank you for making it work.
Oh, wait. I hope you're still listening because I think our special admin is going to respond.
So that is something that we have, we're very interested in starting. I've already began looking into the application process, not only this school year, but last school year. The funding for it is available through the county, and they are actually seeking school districts to create their own 4410 program. It's space.
Issue is space.
The issue is space. We would love, I can't stress to you how much we would love to begin our own 4410 program. They would even provide us with the teaching staff to do that. All they are seeking from us is a location. But because we are so strapped with space, I'm unable to move forward. It would mean for us a decrease in the amount of pre-K students or the amount of kindergarten students that we would be accepting in order to move forward with a process such as that. So if we had the available space to do so, we are totally 100% on board in the application process. I have already met with the county, and we are full steam ahead in order to do that. But I just need the space to do it.
All right, thank you. Ellie, do we have anyone else in the virtual universe raising their hands? Okay, all right, I'm going to continue on now with the consent agenda business of the board. I will take a motion for, we'll just take the first couple of these separately, 4.1. Anyone? 4.1?
So moved.
Second. 4.1, Resolution Regarding Intention to Serve a Secretly Lead Agency Multi-Phase Project at Ann and Dorner Middle School. Any further discussion? We've discussed this quite a bit already. 7/2024 at 7:30 PM here at the AMD Cafeteria. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstention? I will take a motion for 4.3.
So moved.
Second. 4.3, Resolution to Appoint an Impartial Hearing Officer. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstention. We have already done 4.4. I will take anything from the rest of four through 4.5 through 4.14 that folks want me to break out. I'll take a motion for 4.5 through 4.14. So moved.
Second.
4.5, Resolution to Approve an Agreement with the Austin Teachers Association Concerning August 2024 Superintendent's Conference Days. 4.6, Resolution to Approve an Agreement with the Austin Teachers Association Concerning Synchronous Online Courses. 4.7, Resolution to Approve a Facilities Use Agreement with Pace University. 4.8, Resolution Setting the Dates of the Annual Statutory Budget Earing and Annual District Budget Vote and Board of Education Elections. 4.9, Resolution to Approve Phoenix Graphics Inc. as the Official Ballot Printer. 4.10, Resolution to Approve Eastside Movers Inc. as the Moving Company for Transporting the Electronic Voting Machines. 4.11, Resolution Regarding Door Hardening Policy. 4.12, Resolution to Approve Minutes of the Special Meeting Executive Session of January 10th, 2024. 4.13, Resolution to Approve the Minutes of the Special Meeting of January 17th, 2024. 4.14, Resolution to Approve the Minutes of the Regular Meeting of January 24th, 2024. Any discussion?
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
Related to 411, can we just get a little bit of an understanding? That seems like something that state ed is requiring us to do with the door hardening policy, or could we get a little bit of an understanding on that one? Sorry.
Just came up in Policy Committee.
You said the Policy Committee?
Yeah. That was, that was to be consistent with the, with state. So as far as I understood it, we were just matching that. Melissa and Christine, you want to?
So I can jump in. It's not necessarily the state. It is something with regard to the change of how students and teachers respond in the event of a lockdown. Ever since SAVE, we've been telling teachers and students to like hide behind their desks or sit underneath their desks. And recent events determined that that wasn't a good practice and that they either need to block the door or leave the building. Sitting there like ducks, just as we learned, is not the thing to do. So Altaris is recommending that we suspend our fire, our fire code. Because you're not supposed to block the door. You're not supposed to cover and put down the shades from the SED perspective for the window doors. So it's just giving us the space by resolution to allow us to do that in other, in an emergency event only because it's a direct violation of fire code. So we wanted to expedite this and make it a resolution, and then we would revisit it later as part of the policy because we didn't want to have to wait the 30 days to get the second read. So if something happened tomorrow, then we would have the okay that that teacher, and we can educate the teachers that they can block their doors to protect themselves.
And when, because this, this came up, like, well, what does blocking the door mean? And most commonly, like a door jam on the other side of the door, something as simple as that, and keeping like a fire retardant, something that would be in compliance when rolled up, like a shade so it could stay there, and then when there was a lockdown, it could be pulled down and then so to shield the room from being able to be viewable from the hallway. But that other times, we would still be within fire code, and that passing this now allows us to begin training staff now.
So I just, it sounds like a practice and an operation, I guess, a resolution for the board to authorize not observing fire code under certain circumstances. It's, I guess, are we going to put something in the policy manual for this? And does that, is that subject to, to, you know, the regular policy? Because I'm just struggling with the word "policy." Like, is this a board policy? If it is, then we got to do two readings. If we're passing a resolution for a practice and it's not going to be a policy, do we ever revisit this in policy, I guess?
I'm so sorry. It shouldn't say "policy." It should say "resolution," and that should have been taken out.
Okay.
I apologize, I didn't see that.
Okay, so this is like, I guess the question I have is because it's going against fire code, do we have to have a policy at some point? Like, we're doing a resolution now so the practice can be put in place, but do we have to back this up with policy? And basically, it sounds like we do, and so we should expect to see this as a first read in the policy and second read in the next two, but this gets you running off the ground now.
Right.
So the attorney was actually on the call during that meeting, and she suggested let's go down this path, start with a resolution and then do.
Start with the resolution and do the, then do the policy. So we are going to be doing a policy. She was actually on the phone for another policy and was part of the Altaris conversation as well.
So, I mean, I guess I would, I would make a motion in here potentially to amend this title to be, instead of Resolution Regarding Door Policy, we would say Resolution Regarding Door Hardening Practice.
Yeah, that should have been taken out because we talked about that. That it said "policy" and when it should be a resolution.
Okay.
So you want to, you want to?
I'll make a motion to amend 411.
So the resolution regarding door hardening practice.
Correct.
So moved.
Second. Any further discussion about the amendment? All in favor?
Well, just, just.
Sorry?
We're voting on the amendment right now, right?
Yes.
Yep, aye.
Aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstention? Okay, so I'm going to, any, any further discussion on any of the fours that were read off in that 4.1 through 4.14? All right. Sorry, 4.5 through 4.14. So I'm going to take a motion for 4.5 through 4.14, which includes 4.11 as amended. Any, sorry, am I doing this? This always gets me, guys, and it's too late. I think, I think we're okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstention? Okay, carrying on to five, I'll take a motion for 5.1.
So moved.
Can I get a second? Thank you, Christine. 5.1, Resolution to Approve Recommended Placements. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Is there anything in six that trustees would like me to break out? Take a motion for 6.1 through 6.6.
So moved.
Second.
6.1, Resolution to Approve the August 2023 Treasurer's Report. 6.2, Resolution to Approve the Budget Report and Revenue Report for August 2023. 6.3, Resolution to Accept Funds for Driver Education Programs Spring 2023, 2024. 6.4, Resolution to Accept Funds for Austin High School Tournament Fees. 6.5, Resolution Regarding Acceptance of Funds for the Austin Staff Development Center. 6.6, Resolution Regarding Interfund Transfers. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. Seven, Section 7.1 through 7.4, we'll start there. Anything anyone wants me to break out? I'll take a motion through 7.1 through 7.4.
So moved. Second.
7.1, Resolution Regarding Professional Staff Resigns. 7.2, Resolution Regarding Professional Staff Resignations. 7.3, Resolution Regarding Civil Service Staff Resignations. 7.4, Resolution Regarding Support Staff Resignations. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Okay, we have done 7.5. All right, I'll take a motion, anything anyone wants to break out for the rest of Section 7? Take a motion for 7.6 through 7.15. So moved.
Second.
7.6, Resolution Regarding Cognitive Staff Appointment. 7.7, Resolution Regarding Support Staff Appointment. 7.8, Resolution Regarding Bus Attendant Appointment. 7.9, Resolution Regarding Professional Staff Appointment Before and After School Program. 7.10, Resolution Regarding Civil Service Staff Appointments Before and After School Programs. 7.11, Resolution Regarding Support Staff Appointments Before and After School Programs. 7.12, Resolution Regarding Perdiem Substitute Appointments. 7.13, Resolution Regarding APPR Accountability. 7.14, Resolution Regarding Approval of School Volunteers. 7.15, Resolution Regarding Support Staff Requests for Leave of Absence. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstention? Thank you to our volunteers, and thank you to those folks who made donations in Section 6. Much appreciated. Board policies. Let's take a motion for 8.1.
So moved.
Second.
8.1, Resolution to Adopt Policy 1230 Public Participation at Board Meetings as a First Reading. Policy Committee, take us through it.
One of the things that we did discuss as part of this, that I think some board members might be expecting on here is around the timing of when, when a board meeting, sorry, public comment period comes up. And we were advised that, you know, that does not need to be part of the policy. That should, that's at the discretion of, of the board president and the superintendent to make that decision, and we were advised not to change that. But the public comment period, you know, we did say that, you know, there were, that should be, where we were advised that the timing of comments, that should be included in there, and that, you know, the comment period time, how long that should be as well. I mean, should we ever get like a very lengthy comment period? But I think we'll have flexibility to be able to manage that depending on what the type of meeting that we have and the type of input that we're requesting from the public. So what you see there highlighted in yellow would reflect the comments and discussions around the timing and, you know, codifying the, you know, how we should not be discussing individual names or, or personnel. So some of this here is just really bringing that more codified into this particular policy. And I'll leave it to my colleagues to fill in anything I may have missed or incorrectly stated.
No, it's correct. Counsel was on to guide us through this and answer our questions and bring some of the questions that the board has raised around this as well. So I don't know if there's extra questions on top of what is expressed.
With script, like a transcript, and also video itself by using Zoom. So if you have time and you don't want to be part of the Policy Committee, but you want to know what goes down, you can see it in live action. Because we were able to do that. We just figured that out, like, over the past five years, we didn't do that.
Or you can read it, too. Read the script, or you can read the transcripts, too.
Yes, exactly. Because we give back to the meeting, it's two weeks later, and it's after a board meeting, typically. And we're like, what's happening? What did we talk about? So now, you guys have it, we have it. So if you have any questions, take a look at it first. I'm very happy with that prompt.
Along with a cliff note. Along with a cliff notes.
So.
Question.
Oh, go ahead.
No, you can go ahead.
I was just, I know that this is a policy. And then I think sometimes the practice, like, there may be a separate document that goes through like our practice. And I guess my, my question is, so this recommends limiting to 30 minutes in total. And so, and that we can extend that, you know, if we want to upon motion and action from the board. Did our legal counsel have any advice? And maybe I should review the Zoom, the transcripts. But did our legal counsel have any advice on whether we can move public comment around?
We can.
In the meeting?
We, we can.
Because I'm curious as to that.
This is what she's, this is my, she said.
We can, she said to keep it consistent, though.
We can move public comment period around at any time and that that's okay. So if we saw a large crowd, we could say, let's move public comment up. That would not be a problem. That she did say politically, it's a bad idea to move it around willy-nilly so that people can have an expectation about when they can expect to speak when they show up to a meeting. That we should try to be consistent just for consistency's sake, so that people have a reasonable expectation. But that.
It shouldn't be in the policy.
We can, in, like, in certain circumstances, you know, at any circumstance, really move it around. If we'd like to have it at a different time every time we can, it would just probably be unpopular.
So do we have to, if we wanted to make a change, like, say we wanted to do 10 minutes at the beginning, right after the superintendent's update and welcome remarks, 10 minutes after the, you know, main presentation, and then 10 minutes at the very end? Do we have to put that in a policy?
No.
Or we just decide a consensus, this is what we want?
This is at the board's discretion.
It's not, that's why she recommended it not be like that particular sentence, if you will, not be in the policy. So we have the fluctuation to amend it, you know. But I want to bring up the cautionary, which was kind of mentioned, is that you got to be consistent, right? Because whatever word you want to call it, if you shift it around one meeting and don't for the next, it could be seen as, well.
Right.
When this topic was discussed, it was moved.
Right.
But when this topic was discussed, it wasn't. It could, you could say it's the crowd, but there's a whole lot of perspectives of why you move something and why you don't move it. So the, yes, we have the flexibility. We have the right as a board to do that. But we also have responsibility to make sure we can remain consistent if we are to begin that practice.
So then how do we codify that? Or we, we don't?
You don't, you don't.
Decide it as a retreat. This is what we're doing from now on.
Yeah, we, we can discuss this at any point in time, whether it's a public conversation like we're having today or at a retreat, whatever it may be. But whatever we decide it's going to be, if we say 10 minutes, 10 minutes, 10 minutes, or 15 and 15, however we decide to do it, just what we decide to do, keep it consistent. So if we're going to open it up, and I do think there's a fair point, because I don't think, I know that this is our meeting for the public to view. But at the same time, having more engagement in this is a good thing, but we should not stick that into a policy.
She did, she did.
Thank you for taking this up. This has been a sort of thing that I think a lot of communities talked about. And I talked about it when I was on the other side of the table. It's interesting counsel's advice here. Because, and I'm not going to be one to question counsel. I'm not a lawyer nor play one on TV. But looking at, I just did a quick survey, Yorktown. They very clearly spell out in there saying public participation, that it's going to be on the agenda at this point, and then it's going to be on that point. And their agenda item, by the way, is right, right at the top. Pledge, boom, we go right into it for the first one. Same thing, I looked up Wapinter Central, my district up in Dutchess County where I went to school. Same thing. It very clearly spells it out, that we're going to have it on the agenda, right at the top. And then a second one. To me, I understand the ability to have flexibility, but to me, it creates, let's just walk through tonight. Kim Jeffrey was there for three hours. How would you know? And how, and what is the actual procedure then? Does the board have to take a vote? Or do we see, hey, Captain, Kim Jeffrey's there. How do we ask her, if she's here for comment? To me, this without putting, and then how do you signal to the public? You know, your agendas have to be consistent. By not putting it in the policy, where are you going to put in the agenda then? So to me, the counsel's curious here because to me, it's creating more sort of uncertainty and creates more effort, if you will, for the board to sort of say, okay, we hear, we're not here, who's speaking, who's not.
Well, we don't have to move it around.
Yeah, we, we.
We just, we can choose where to put it, how many, and then we can be consistent about that.
It sounds like it's something we could agree on, for example, like at a retreat. Like, this is what our practice is going forward. And then we start writing our agendas.
Okay.
But that thing we've been talking about is. Is agenda, right? Which isn't codified in policy. Because the agenda is set by the board. And so, like you're saying, if we would establish, okay. And that's where the consistency comes. If we establish up front, what, where we feel that it's a best fit consistently, not based on who's in the audience or what they're here to talk about, but based on just the placement that makes sense for us as a board, for us as a community, however you want to, you know, view that perspective.
Yeah. And Rob, I, I know the point that you're making on this one. I think that the piece of this is that in the event that we have to, I mean, we won't, if we decide we're going to do this, consistency is something that has been stressed. But in the event that there's some emergency that we have to contend with, that we have to talk about immediately, that's a dire need, you know, whatever that might be, that it gives us a little bit more flexibility to be able to shift that as we need to. But that doesn't mean that every meeting, all right, now this meeting, you're, we get 15 minutes. And then the next time, we're going to change that to like the middle of the meeting. It's, we keep it consistent so that it doesn't seem like we're, we're just arbitrarily choosing when, when we decide we want to let people speak versus when we don't.
Basically, the advice is, it's legal to do that. You can do that. We're within our right to do that. But it wasn't advisable to move it around all over the place.
Right.
I mean, we're sort of in this jam a little bit because we really have a policy where it sounds like we didn't necessarily need to have things in the policy. And then we felt like the only way to revisit this and kind of figure out what's a better workable system for our community was through a prescriptive policy. So it sounds like we can do sort of whatever we want to do and that this is legally what we need to have in the policy. And then our legal counsel is saying, but you as the board, the seven elected in 2023, 2024, you guys need to implement a practice and be consistent about it, barring an emergency.
That's right. That's right.
So does that mean we could do it today? Because the language that's being proposed here doesn't seem to say, basically, the board can at its discretion do whatever it wants. Like, it seems like literally we could turn, activate this at the next meeting and say, okay, going forward, this is going to be our agenda. It's going to be one, one point right after pledge or whatever you want to do it, and then off we go. Like, I guess I'm not, I'm not clear what, what the policy change is going to be. My, again, my point is not so much the 30 minutes. I understand the codify on that. I'm saying like, the thing of, I've mentioned, like, we should move this to the top. It sounds like we could do it right now, as long as we're consistent about it and not arbitrary. And the other part of that, though, couldn't you just point of order it? If like, there was an emergency, you point of order and move it on.
You can always change an agenda at every meeting.
Right? So, so, and I think that's part of this. I do have concerns and questions around the policy. You know, a couple of things, right? Do we have a red line? Did we get a red line of this in existing? I'm not sure. I know the comment was made, like, there's stuff in the existing policy that's problematic. But I don't know that we have a red line of the existing. This looks, is this?
There wasn't a red line. There was an addition to. So the way, the way red.
This is, this is in addition to what's there. So the yellow highlighted is what's in addition to there?
That's addition to.
Okay.
And that's basically what she added, too. Like, there was some stuff that was in guidelines.
That wasn't a policy.
That she said, you know, to, to fortify this, to really put some teeth into it. You should put it in your policy instead, right? Like.
Yep. The three minutes was one thing. Because in the past, that has been changed. And part of the reason it was in the guidelines was to give flexibility to do that and not through policy. So I guess a couple of things. Did we look at the NISBA policy? And then I, I do have concerns about capping and saying 30 minutes across the board. I guess, how is the board going to decide when you're going to pull the 30-minute rule and when you're not? And how are you going to do that when there's people that want to talk about an issue that their thinking is important and you got people lined up and you basically are going to do that? I, I don't see practically, in the experience I have, sitting at this table and going through a lot of different types of scenarios of how you're going to put that in place. And, and then to the consistency points that have been raised, okay, we want to hear what you have to say, so we're going to let you go beyond 30 minutes. But we decide we vote, we don't want to hear what the people lined up have to say? This, this gets you into a tough spot. And so I guess I'm, while I think legally, there's a lot you could do here, in practice, I'm struggling with seeing this one.
So Frank, I think that the point that, and it's a very good point you're raising. However, the, the issue that came up that, that our legal said is that you don't want your public comment period to overtake the board's business and the board's agenda. You know, as much as, even if you look at it today, we put our public comment period where it's placed somewhat towards the middle, wish, and then towards the end. And so, you know, in theory, whether it's directly stated or not, we're kind of limiting them anyway through the fact of its placement time and everything else that we got to discuss because the business of the board still has to come first. So in this case here, I, you know, your point's well taken. If we have to suspend this, what action will we take to suspend? That's a good question, I, I think.
I, I think.
What warrants that?
I think what's there today is really two different types of public comment period. There's agenda items and then there's non-agenda items, right? And so the agenda items is a defined part of the meeting. Non-agenda items are a different part of the meeting, right? So I, I think it's a little different. Like, we don't have a cap. People come at the end of the night and basically are lined up and they wait to that. Now, I guess the question I would say is like, if you're really looking at limiting time, I would limit time, if you're deciding you want to move things up to an earlier part of the meeting in order to keep your meetings on track, you could limit time at the beginning of the meeting. I think if you limit time across the board at the end of the day, and even then, like, you're going to get to situations where what happens when you have a lot of people coming here that want to talk about something, you know? I mean, we can't pop, prevent anybody from coming in here, right? We, we can't even prevent non-community members from coming in here. So somebody who comes in and wants to basically, you know, take an agenda item at the end of the day and just run with it, if you're going to basically cap somebody in one circumstance and then say in another circumstance, then you're denying them their free speech. And, and this is the part that I'm concerned about. I'd prefer looking at what NISBA has and getting more input from the council on this one because I think you, I don't see how you do this without selectively making a decision. If we want to hear from you, we don't want to hear from you.
So your, your points, I, I hear your point and I think it's worth a conversation. But I'm thinking here, would, what I'm hearing is that if we put this in totality of saying 30 minutes in total rather than 10, 10, 10, or 15 and 15. And if this were to say something like your first open public comment period, and if we decided as a board that we're going to make that the first thing after the superintendent's update, that that might be one way to do it versus just saying, let's just cap it in total. Because some people could possibly feel that, hey, look, three minutes is kind of, is impeding on my ability to kind of say what I need to say because I've been cut off because I've got more to say.
I think Frank's point is that, like, he doesn't want to limit the public comment period to just 30 minutes with this open-ended, but we can take a motion to extend it. And then like, where do we sort of stop that? Or do we, or can we?
So you get into contentious budget season. We're heading into, we have a $9 million thing.
Right.
You're, you're heading to, I've been in those meetings where we've been sitting in Roosevelt late at night, basically with people that are all lined up to speak. Now, the time limit, I think, is a good thing for individual speakers to have because you need to have that, right? And you can't also pass your time to someone else, right? That's what's been in the rules, not really spelled out here. But the idea that you're going to have a room full of people and you're going to make a decision of when you're going to go past 30 minutes and when you're not. I can get, different times of the agenda, you may want to try and set that. That's, that's a question for counsel at the end of the day. If we were to put a cap on a public comment period and say, listen, we're going to do 10 people for the first, you know, we're going to take comment early and we're going to accept 10 people. Then the question is, how do you pick the 10 people? How do you do it in a non-consistent way, in a consistent way? So that it's not the same people always getting, you know, to the meeting first. It's not a first come, first served. Like, this is what we've talked about a little bit as a board. You're getting yourself into a tough spot here with this one. So that, that's my two cents on it at the end of the day is I, I would, I would say if we didn't look at the NISBA, we probably should. But I guess as it sits right now, I just, I don't, I don't see like supporting this because it leaves too much selective practices to when you decide who you want to hear from and who you don't. And that's the part that's going to get you into trouble.
I was also curious why there was a 30-minute cap, like, at the end of the night. I personally don't really care if people want to talk and talk. So that was a question that I had where that 30 minutes came from.
So as it stands, let's say we have a contentious budget issue or something else. Something big happens. We have a huge number of people. Right now, that time just goes until, if we have 200 people here, that's 200 times three minutes. And we are bound to that because if you let one person speak, there's no limit.
You can change, with a guideline, and that's part of the reason it was in guidelines and not policy. There's been meetings where when you've had a, a crowd of people, that you change the amount of time as you're going to allocate based on practical nature. So you can change that, just the same way you can move something up in a meeting or not move up. And that was part of the reason why it was in guidelines and not in policy.
I'm comfortable, like you said, like, let's have, like, counsel wrote this. Like, I'm comfortable with the level of counsel we've received on this because we asked all these questions and this is what her recommendation was based on the same kind of question. Like, we asked these questions. Well, what happens? How do we manage if there's a large group or if we don't want to be perceived as picking and choosing who gets to speak? And we were assured, and correctly, if I'm wrong, other members on the committee, that this has been pretty widely adopted, that it's a pretty popular policy. I would not be comfortable moving, I'm, I'm, I like the idea of having public comment first or some sort of opportunity to speak at the beginning so that we don't have community members sitting for three hours. And I think that we'll hear from more community members if they are, can be assured that they're not going to have to sit through three hours in order to say their piece.
Yeah.
And so I'd like to encourage that. However, I'm not comfortable doing that if we can't limit that amount of time because otherwise, we do open ourselves up to a situation where before we've had our meeting, we're hearing from 200 people in a row. And I, I do want to prevent that with, and we can't do that with teeth without putting something like that in policy. And I'm comfortable right now with the level of counsel we've received on that because she was sitting in that meeting and addressed that. And I'm so glad that Alita mentioned that we can all go and look at it and you can hear for yourself what she says. You don't have to take my word for it.
No, I don't, listen, you're going to get different opinions from different counsel at the end of the day on this one. I, I find this one counter to what I've heard in the past and talked, discussed with counsel about these policies at the end of the day. So I guess as it sits now, I wouldn't be in support of this because I think it leads itself to basically a selective decision that the board has to make of which, which things they want to hear and which things they don't.
I'm not sure I understand.
And you're capping it at 30 minutes. And you decide when you want to go beyond 30 minutes. So what happens? You know, when, when are you going to make a decision where you have a bunch of people in the room that you're not going to go, that you're going to say, you know what? We're not going past 30 minutes. That's what's in the policy.
Can I ask, just a clarifying question? Sorry. So you're saying the reason that the 30 minutes is in there is because if it was open-ended, no limit, it wouldn't, it would make us look like we were picking and choosing if we said 10 minutes in the, like, first comment section, 10 minutes in the second, and then open.
It's intended to give us that ability to be able to say, hey, look, we, we want to hear from you. We are, you know, if we as a board choose to move our public comment period up front, we can do that. How we decide to do that is up to us. And now, in terms of if it's a larger period of time, and we had to, we've done this where we've moved our public comment period when we're talking about the bond the first time or maybe a few months ago. And we have the flexibility to do that. And I, I'm, I'm comfortable just as, as you are because we did have pretty substantive conversations about it. just as you are because we did have pretty substantive conversations about it, and I-
I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt you, I just think that I didn't ask my question the right way. Christine said that the 30 minutes was put in there to give teeth to, we can do 10 minutes at the beginning, we can do 10 minutes at the end, and we can do 10 minutes in the middle, and that way it doesn't look like we're picking and choosing. But if you don't have that solidified 30 minutes, it doesn't-
That first comment period could go on for as long as people wanted to speak.
So, you can't say like, we don't have a limit, but, sorry. If we have 30-minute limit, then you can say, we have 10 minutes in the beginning, we have 10 minutes in the middle, 10 minutes at the end. If we have no limit, you can't say, we have 10 minutes in the beginning, 10 minutes in the middle, and however much time at the end.
Unlimited at the end.
Okay, thank you. That was my, that's what I wasn't understanding. So, now I understand the reason for the 30 minutes.
Yeah.
I will say, I'm looking at, like, I'm looking at peak skills, and theirs, theirs has 30 minutes at the beginning, 30 minutes at the end, maybe extended by majority vote of the board.
Right.
Does seem pretty common that this is the, there's a time, and then maybe extended.
Yeah, that's-
I'm trying to find the sample one from NISBA.
Catherine, as you do that, I agree. Like, and Frank, I totally get your point. There's probably a joke in there, you ask one lawyer, get four opinions, so I totally understand where you're coming from. Two, flexibility that the board has to either A, extend the 30, which sounds like the language might, and/or, and I'm looking at, you know, Chappaqua here, they say that the board has discretion to extend the three minutes to four. So, to me, that could be a nice thing to have too, so individual, you could extend. And then the other thing Chappaqua does is that they actually, in their policies, say the comment could be on agenda or non-agenda items. So, philosophically from my end, one, most important, legal, two, as broad and as gauging as possible that fellow trustees would agree to. And some of those ideas, again, seem pretty good. Flexibility to extend three to four minutes, flexibility to extend 30 and beyond, and as soon as you can get that first one in on the top, I would be in support of whatever policy meets that flexibility for all those things.
And she was clear that we can't limit comment based on perceived content, right? So, unless it violates, you know, like, our guide, our policy as far as like, discussing students and faculty, but if somebody has going to come up and complain, and we think everybody's going to complain, we can't limit it because everybody's going to complain, you know, we just think it's going to be complaints, and we don't like to hear complaints, right?
Hear complaints, and the good-
Right? That we have to treat the messages that we're receiving as neutral, you know, neutrally when we make the choice. So, it would really just be an issue of practicality for me.
I don't see that listed in here, right? And I think that's part of it. I mean, from my perspective, I don't have enough information from council to basically, and I think it goes counter to what I would say is a good practice in what we've had with discussions with other council. If the board wants to move forward on that, you can vote to move forward on it. What I would basically say is, I'm going to request that basically I get the opportunity to speak with council and raise these concerns so that I can, on a second read, make an informed opinion if that's the way people want to go.
I-
I think the question that, I'm not sure, and maybe you said this happened in this, in the committee or not, is this just the question around, you can't, you're saying you can't define an amount of public comment period in the beginning of the meeting and put a time limit on that, but then have a second period with no limit on it. Did I hear that correctly or not? Because-
I'm not, that's what-
No, that's not where we, that's not where we're-
No.
Okay.
I think that was just response to Annie's question about whether or not we can have it unlimited, and Catherine said no at the end, so-
No, I didn't. I was just saying, is that what she was asking?
Oh, 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 okay. But from my understanding, and everybody can correct me if I'm wrong, there was three things that she brought up. The first thing is, it's the board's meeting, and we really have to conduct the business of the board. The second thing is, to Frank's point, even if it's about the budget, and we know based on this previous presentation that we have a lot of discussing to do, there's no decisions that are happening tonight. So, if you have 20 or 300 people standing here, and you allow 300 people to speak at 11:27 PM, we're just listening. And see, and what she said, she made a point of, if you have 10 people commenting about the same thing, and they're not giving their minutes to someone else, and it's individual comments, then that should be sufficient to understand what the issue is, and then the board can go back and make a decision. Also, there's another avenue besides the board meeting, because we typically do not respond to questions directly from the board, and even from some administrators, that they can use different means to communicate with the board through the email address. So, those are the three things that she addressed, but the real issue is when you don't limit the 30 minutes on one time, and you extend it to two hours on another time, what's the basis for doing that? You, you know, in a good way, yeah, you want to hear feedback about the budget, but if it's something that, you know, we really understand, we've talked about it, but people still coming back to talk about it, then we're going to spend another two hours on it, or we're going to say, no, you only get 30 minutes. So, that's where she's talking about where there's a liability there, because it looks like we're being arbitrary and capricious. So, those are the three things that I got out of it. And we did ask all of these questions, but certainly I can make an arrangement for anybody who wants to meet with her via Zoom, I can be on the call, and we can talk to her again directly.
Can I make a suggestion along those lines? Because I'm, I, we have been talking about this in one form or another for many years on this board, right? And I, I am, I understand this, I'm good with it, I'm good with the level of legal input that we've received on it. I don't see a downside to moving forward with this. I'm ready to move it forward as a first read tonight. But I definitely fully understand why some trustees would want to meet with legal to go over it, and then I certainly, like, we have time, right? We have to do a second reading. So, if, you know, after that meeting, there are lingering questions, and we really, we have another opportunity to table it, but I don't want us to lose ground either, because I know this is something that there is a lot of momentum on. So, I guess that's my compromise, is I don't see a downside to voting on it as a first read, right? If it's, it doesn't have to be unanimous vote, I'm sure there'll be no hard feelings on that. We definitely make arrangements for anybody who has further questions to meet with legal counsel, and then we come back and re-discuss or make thoughts known to the policy committee before we get to the second read part.
I, like, Frank, what do you think? I mean, I agree with, I mean, this, all our stuff is important, but to your point, this has been, this has been a long, you want to get it 100% right, and that everyone out of here is comfortable with where we net out. So, I think that's a very good point, Catherine, and the offer to talk to council outside of policy committee, for anyone who's not on policy committee, seems pretty reasonable. We can fire away with all the questions and say, hey, is this going to cover all the things you want to get? Frank, if you think that potentially works, I mean, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, it sounds like there's a consensus to move forward with this. I think it's ill-advised, that's my two cents. I'll vote against it, and, you know, but I think the opportunity, all board members should, if there's questions around this, come through, should have the same opportunity. So, I would appreciate the opportunity to talk to council on it, and I'll probably talk to NISBA as well.
Okay, fair enough.
Just one, one thing, if I may.
Yes, go ahead.
So, once, when do you think we would be the best time, and I don't know what everybody else thinks, in terms of when we place our public comment period? Is that retreat, or is that today? Is that next meeting? Is that when?
So, I personally feel like we should try to come, assuming something like this passes the second read, a good, good time to try to talk about it further. Is that a retreat, and how we actually want to see this practically play out? We fortunately have one in, I think, three weeks, right? So, that will also give us time to hash out some things with legal. The practice of where we have public comment, I just want to, is separate from this policy, right? Step one to me is, do we pass this policy? And then step two is, practically speaking, now that we have this new policy, how are we going to implement the policy? Which is the second layer of the question. So, look, if you're asking my opinion, my opinion is, I think we should have 10, 10, and 10. I think-
You need to do, if you're doing three minutes, you have to do nine.
Okay. Maybe somebody doesn't go for three minutes, right? Maybe they go for two, but 10, 10, and 10 is how I would do it. I do the first 10, you know, right after the welcome remarks and the pledge. I do the next 10 right after how we've been doing it in the middle. I do the last 10 at the end. If I see, you know, a lot of bodies in the chair that are clearly wanting to talk to us, I would extend the third comment period, you know, take a motion to extend it, and see how we go from there. That would be my personal take and opinion.
Catherine, it may be intertwined though, because again, sample size of four, all the policies I'm reading spell out very clearly when the, when this public comment period happens. So, we might have the right counsel on it, keep it out, you can do what you want, be flexible, but this is one of the questions I am, I would ask because the rest of them very clearly spell it out. And aside from the legal, what are the operational ramifications of how that would then have to run if we don't spell it out? Again, it goes to like, you pull, you think you're going to comment, you're not, step up, not, so that is one that-
So, I think that's like, that's exactly why we punt it, right? We make, we ask, we pass this now, we ask our questions of legal counsel, we punt that issue, I don't, I don't, I don't feel comfortable making a big change on that tonight, and then we can circle back on, on that portion of it, right?
But second reading allows you to make any and all changes.
Second, listen, second reading, we can vote-
You can mark up the whole thing if you want.
Yeah, we can send it back to policy committee.
It becomes a first reading when you change it.
Yes, so that's the issue. You can't-
You change a clock.
You can change a typo on a second reading, but, but, you know, you are-
Starts the clock.
It starts the clock again if there are substantive changes.
Wholesale change it, yeah.
So, is that, are we in an either-or position right now where we're going to do the first, if it's going to end up possibly, it sounds like we have a lot of feedback, if it's going to end up possibly turning into a first read again anyway? Do we want to move forward with the first read, or do we want to? Is tabling an option? I don't know.
Yes, anyone can move to table it, and we can-
Because I'm just, I'm looking at, you know, as we're talking, my memory is being jogged. I remember asking her a specific question around, do we need to put something in here that says, okay, what if only, we have a 30-minute comment period, but only one person's here? And they're like, well, I want to-
Talk for 30 minutes.
Yeah, I'm here, five people, I'm here representing five people, so I'm going to use all their time. Or 10 people are here, and one person says, I'm going to speak for all of these 10 people, so I'll take all of their time. If I'm recalling correctly, she said it existed somewhere else legally speaking that, that they couldn't do that.
Yeah.
Right.
But it's not noted, it's-
It is.
In NISBA, it says you can't speak your time.
That they can't, it says you can speak, you should only have one opportunity per meeting to speak unless there is a balance of time left in the public. So, there's a, my mem, like, as we're talking more-
Now, you give somebody 30 minutes to speak in one meeting, and you give somebody three in the other, they're going to come back and say, what are you guys doing? You're giving unfair treatment.
So, I'm only saying that because that, I remember saying that to her, and I'm looking at the minutes, and I don't see that reflected, but I know I said that to her, and I know that's what her, that was, you know, so I'm just, I'm curious if we're, it sounds like we have a lot of questions. There are some people that feel comfortable, but it seems like there are a lot of unanswered questions to say, okay, yeah, this is a good first read.
If we changed it to include that may choose too, is that considered to be a, you know, that-
Sorry, that may what?
You know the language you just read off? You said, I can't remember which school district it was, it said, it may, they may, the board may choose to extend it. You read that?
Yeah.
If we added that, that would create a wholesale change.
That's in here. That we can choose to take a motion to extend it.
At the 30 minutes.
Yeah, limited to 30 minutes, subject to extension of public comment period upon action of the board as a whole.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
So, somebody coming in can basically say, I'm the only person speaking, and you have a 30-minute window, and I don't accept your three-minute limit based on this policy.
Except, if our practice was, and we had it on our agenda, 10 minutes at the beginning, 10 minutes at the middle, 10 minutes at the end, you're right, they could, if they're the only one here, they could speak at all three times, but we could, hey, you know, you've gone through your 10 minutes, thank you very much, we're moving on with our meeting, there's another public comment period at the middle of the meeting.
This is something that it seems so foreign to me, and maybe that this is an interesting legal opinion on it. It's counter to everything I've heard in practice.
Okay, I mean, the last line says, unless there's a balance of time left. So, you could go up once, I did my three, there's 27 minutes left, anyone around? No? Okay, I have a second chance to come, that's my interpret, not a lawyer, but that's, I think Frank-
I think that's a reasonable interpretation, that basically we would have a hard time defending based on the language of this, right? That's my point.
No, that's exactly how I interpreted. Yes, somebody could, according to this, speak for 30 minutes, not consecutively, if that's the practice that we wanted to do, but could theoretically speak for 30 minutes.
But to that point, what I'm saying to you is what I recall in that meeting, her saying that it existed somewhere, that you can't do that.
Uh-huh.
So, that's what, that's what I have another question based on my recollection of the conversation I had with her around that piece. Because her advice was that, no, you cannot just perpetually speak just because there's time left on the clock to speak over and over again. But it's not reflected here. So, you know, I just think there's a lot, and I think this is why it's taken us so long to solidify this, because there's so many loose ends, and there's so much potential for us to not be reflective of our values as a, as a district that honors equity, right? Because even if you talk about crowd size or a really big topic, right, not all parents can make it out to a board meeting, right? And so, is it, is it that, it's just so many things. There's so many open-ended, I appreciate the urgency of this, but I also appreciate the fact that, look how long it's taken us just to get to this point, right? And that's not, that's not for lack of trying, right? It's just because there's so many variables that we want to make sure we cover, and that we are honoring everyone's voice, and that we are also able to practice business of the board, which is our primary duty here when we show up to these meetings. So, I'm just throwing that out there, so it's a thought.
All right, so if this does go back, here's my question to the policy committee. Why couldn't we, or can we, unless, you know, we, each member of the public who wishes to make a public comment should only have one opportunity per meeting to speak unless there's a balance of time left in the public comment period? In any event, no individual shall be permitted to speak more than six minutes. Like, could we limit it in that way?
I think you're going to run into a practice of, I think, the advice I've gotten in the past is, when you let one person speak longer, now you got to let everybody speak longer. And selectively applying that is a very tricky, sticky place to be.
We would have to have equal treatment of everybody. We can't give favorable conditions to one person.
But how is that not equal?
Well, see- Last meeting, I gave you 30 minutes to speak. This meeting, I'm giving somebody else on issue three minutes.
But if you have the limit that, under any circumstances, no one will be allowed to speak more than six minutes in totality.
I think, that's a question of legal, yep.
So, can I make a motion to table this one? I like to make a motion to table 8.1.
Any further discussion?
Well, it's got to be moved, right? Second.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
So, moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Absent. Okay, next policy. Is this one easy? Like, do I need to break it out?
December. I want it to in December.
I'll take a motion for 8.2.
So, moved.
8.2, resolution to adopt policy 1250, annual district election and budget vote as a first read. Any discussion?
Can we just get a little background on it? Sorry. I think this seems pro forma, but just curious.
Yeah, that's exactly what it is, just the technicality to bring it up to speed literature-wise. I think we just, what, one, literally like a couple of words changed.
It was like a- Three.
So moved.
Second.
8.3, resolution to adopt policy 5220, school-sponsored student expression as a first reading. Any discussion?
Just a little overview on this one if you could.
We have the addition of some, we have the, so what's in there with the red line is additional language that's in there. Just to clarify this further, and I'm not remembering all of the particular details around this.
I, I just took brief notes on this. I wrote, a regulation of school-sponsored speech that violates DASSA is what is really addressed here. And Stephanie, again, was at that meeting, so she happened to be talking about us, to us with all the policies, because she was there. And she said it looks good to her.
It's just with the addition of this language.
Yeah.
The red line language.
Yeah, that's correct.
Got it.
And that's based on.
DASSA.
Nis, yeah, but NISBA, NISBA language.
It was so nice to have her there discussing. It was just like, oh, you know, because how many times do we come here and say, oh, we should really have counsel take a look at? I mean, she was right there, looks good, great, let's put it in.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention. Okay, continuing on now to our audience recognition for our second public comment guidelines. There's no one here in person. Illy, is there anyone raising their virtual hand to make a comment? Okay, board reports and dialogue. Anyone? Sounds like policy committee was busy, so thank you for that. Sorry that we sent one back, but, you know, two out of three ain't bad.
I will say there was one other policy we discussed that's not ready yet. And again, it was so nice to have Stephanie with us. We were talking about therapy animals, and Stephanie reviewed that, and she had suggested that the policy was not ready for a first read and that she would wordsmith it. So, you can expect something at some point from us.
Yes, that was kind of like.
Therapy animals.
Yeah, we, so there are, there's some language around that because there, there's some discussion around the type of therapy animals. Obviously, there's a lot of liability related to that, you know, because there have been animals like therapy chickens, and that's not a joke, but it's a real thing. But it's just how you define what a therapy animal is. I mean, we have peaches, and then somebody wants to bring in another dog, and then are they a certified therapy animal? And there's some language around certification, and then there's the other thing that, I think, did we talk about also the allergy?
Allergies came up, because allergies are absent from the policy. So she said she wanted to add some language to talk about kind of whose needs are the priority in the situation. A, a person with, you know, if it's a therapy dog, the person with allergies needs to take precedence. But if it's a service dog, it's more questionable, but she's going to, like I said.
She's going to look at that.
Look at it.
And then there's also making sure, because the word therapy animal is thrown around. There's emotional support animals, and then there's therapy animals, which is a whole different certification. So there's also solidifying that in our language, making sure we're not using the two titles interchangeably for everything.
Correct.
Because then we get into the, the, like, if we have gerbils in the class, or butterflies and all this other stuff, like, are we opening up a can of worms, so to speak, to restrict other animals being present in the class?
I will say, because this is one that I put together based of, Illy and I spent about two days, because when I arrived here, there wasn't a policy, and I feel we were vulnerable by it. I asked three years ago, NISBA, for one, and they say, well, they were working on one. And lo and behold, when Illy asked again this fall, they're still working on it. There needs to be a policy here. I will tell you, peaches is approved via mud agrees, and a lot of the language from it comes from that. But again, it's, there's a vulnerability for us right now that we don't have one. So I'm stuck between a rock and a hard place between not allowing any of them for lack of a policy right now.
Yeah, and I think that that's something that's to come. We, we did see that, well, this is probably like the second time we had a conversation, which the second time was just with the, with legal in the room. So she is going to take a look at that, and our hope is that in our next meeting, we'll get an initial view of that.
We have gotten more requests too.
Yeah, yeah, it's not a surprise, because there are, you know, there is that interchange, like Melissa was saying, about therapy versus emotional versus whatever, right?
And I guess it can't be restrictive to, I mean, all of this can't be restrictive to a student in the classroom. So if there's like allergies or thing, or legitimate reasons that the student doesn't want to have it.
Yeah, almost all of them have been done this, particularly they are used for kids with autism. They are allergy-free, there's a pet dander thing, there's all kinds of notification that you send out letters to parents when it's happening. So you have to go through that process first, and we put those, where I've been before, in the regulation piece of it.
Yep.
Any further board dialogue?
I wanted to mention, I did the legislative committee meetings with West Putt, or with our legislators, with Dana Levinberg, and I just picked some things that West Putt had, like, I'd asked the board, what do you guys want me to talk to Dana Levinberg about? And you guys were like, oh, you'll figure it out. So I, I just picked some topics that West Putt had chosen to advocate, the ones that I felt, you know, I let other school districts talk about foundation aid funding, because we've been screaming from the rooftops on that, and we're, you know, other districts are being very adversely harmed, so they were very vocal about that. I talked about, you know, continuing the, to allow people to work, I forget what it's called, to lift the income cap for retirees who want to work, because that's how married, we were able to get married that way. We want to keep that, lift that cap, keep that in place, and just a few other things that I picked out from that West Putt thing. So I had that conversation, and that was it, from me.
I went to the MBK presentation, and it was really nice. They did a walkthrough of the Bethany art exhibit. It was cool, they had built an entire, like, replica of a Joseph Rosenwald school. And then just during the presentation, they talked about like the milestones they focus on, which is entering school, ready to learn, reading at grade level by third grade, and graduating high school. One thing they mentioned was that they're not seeing the kids who feel they belong in MBK and other places like science research and like robotics club. And even though those are places they can go, they just don't feel comfortable and like they belong. And I feel like that's something worth noting.
Did they say why?
It's, I think it's just like an internal, I don't belong here, I don't feel comfortable here kind of thing. That was the sense that I got. And then also just of note, the First Steps program is not very heavily attended by black children. It's just, I did ask why, and it was just kind of like, it's just more popular with the Hispanic population. That's all.
So I know our, we've been gathering a lot of SEL data, and we've been discussing a lot of that in Equity Committee, and we have that, and I'm wondering if it can be brought back up, I guess, to, to the attention of the board dispensed, however that looks, just because I think a lot of the questions that are being asked around that are pretty explicit in that data of, around school connectedness, and where some students and even possibly in some areas staff don't really feel, you know, quite comfortable in certain, in certain situations.
Yeah, sorry to interrupt you, but I just remembered too, they did talk about seeing teachers who look like them helped the feeling of belonging.
There was a facilities committee, advisory committee meeting with the members of that last night. You saw tonight what really was presented last night. So there's really nothing more there, I think, to, to share unless Christine or Melissa, you had anything else to. The, I attended the meeting with Senator Harkam on the legislative advocacy piece. And there was really two things that emerged from that, similar to like Christine, I had the West Putt agenda and that, but there was two things. The hold harmless provision, which I think in the long run, you know, I think you want to be very cautious about advocating for not maintaining aid, because, you know, you have, you have half the districts right now, they lose, that just ends up being a cut. So clearly, the majority in the room were across the board saying, like, you need to maintain hold harmless. And I think there's legitimate reasons for rural districts in particular across the board. So if you think of New York State as a big tent, I think while we were very successful in advocating for making sure people aren't left behind, I do think there is an argument to be made for keeping everybody on, at their levels.
So you're saying, in terms of there's an argument to be made to keep hold harmless in the formula?
Yeah, and I, and I think, you know, if you were to ask me what we, what should be done, is that basically then, then new money and should be targeted and allocated based on updated formula information. So we're using 2000 census data and foundation aid, like, we got fully funded, but we really didn't get fully funded, because we're using the population of the district from 2000 versus current. So there's still inputs that need to be updated at the end of the day, and that would drive additional new money into places like Austin, you know? But I think if you eliminate the hold harmless, which you opened the door to, is basically just a reduction in funds in terms of governor's proposal to slash education funding. And there's a, there'll be a constitutional battle when that comes, but politically, I think it's a non-starter. There's too many districts hurt by losing hold harmless. And for all the districts that advocated for foundation aid for places like Austin, I think it would put us in a, in a bad position also to basically go out there and say, well, we just want to get all the new money, and ignore their realities of what they're dealing with, so.
What happens to the districts that are well over 100%?
Well, I think with the hold harmless provision, they stay there. Now the question would be is.
But then what do we get out of that then?
Well, I think the focus should be on the new money. I think your focus should always be on updated new targets at the end of the day. If enrollment drops and you maintain, so be it.
The point is that it's very difficult to, for the school districts who are dealing with it right now to deal with a sudden huge cut, and especially in combination with a tax levy cap. So a lot of school districts are facing surprise cuts that they weren't expecting, because it's always been held harmless, and they thought that they could count on this money in their budget, now they can't. And they can't even within their power make up for that because of the tax cap. So it's like two, two of those things working together to, to force them to have to make cuts that they really wouldn't have to make otherwise.
Right, but then their, their allocation of fund, and I'm, I'm not taking a position on this, I'm just trying to understand this, but their allocation of funding per, per student would be much higher if you leave it alone? And meaning that higher than what your average, we were below average for a long time.
What hold harm, harmless advocates for is basically a lack of volatility and some sense of predictability, so that you know that your funding isn't going to go down now. I think Frank is saying, that doesn't mean the other funding can't come up. It means any new money that comes in should go to where it needs to go.
Yeah, the new money should be allocated in a way that makes a purportful sense across the board. You won't get there in one year, but you'll move toward it.
But it's very, it's been very hard for anybody to balance a budget when they're losing millions of dollars and their budgets are not even, you know, they're smaller, it's smaller school districts.
Yeah.
And I understand what you're saying, like, they're overfunded, just take that money away. It's too much money for them, right? But to do that suddenly, especially without any notice, and with the tax cap has put a lot of, many school districts in even worse.
Philosophically, I think I can get behind like a phase down, but I'm not sure I can get behind a, let's keep it and.
I think politically, you've got to pick your battles, is my two cents on that one.
I mean, I'm not getting in, I'm, there's.
That's what I said, like, I chose not to talk about.
I'm here in Austin, trying to balance a budget.
That, that, that hold harmless.
Other people talk about that.
If, if we were back four years ago, I think we'd be jumping all over to get rid of hold harmless, because that's what, that was what was hurting us. But I, I'm, I guess I think about it like, I, I know that there isn't a lot that we as a district could do, but we have to keep the advocacy efforts going. But somehow in the hold harmless aspect of it, we got the short end of the stick. And that took a tremendous amount of effort from a lot of people from across the district, and within the school board, and within the administration, and everybody else that was involved in there. And it, it just, it sound, I think the thing that I just want to understand is like, how do you do this in a managed way? Because I think leaving it alone seems like we're still back in that place where we have to go and scrounge for money. And I think that, that kind of sucks.
I would say though, that a lot of school districts that supported Austin and others, and we did it collectively to, to make sure that was held. Hold harmless has been in place forever, this sudden change in it is really.
That's a watershed change.
It's like, and, and it sets a statement about moving forward. You look at this situation, Mount Vernon is scheduled to lose a fortune in money. Bedford, who's got a rising population of kids on pre-reduced, is scheduled to lose a ton of money. So inherent in the formula itself is ancient data, as Frank just mentioned. And right now, under IDEA, if you think about new money, we were promised that we would be funded up to 40% from the federal level. Basically, the state gets 17, and I think locally here, maybe 11%. They haven't changed the amount of money for students, I mean, like, so, so fixing the data that goes into foundation aid, really looking at the cost of like significant, even the foundation aid formula was not adjusted for the new changes in the Part 154 regulations, which relate to English language learners. So districts that had a significant increase with English language learners are, have new rules and a funding mechanism that relies on the old rules. So the whole thing is like, so for her to arbitrarily do that to that without looking at all these other things is a problem.
It's a valid point, I get it. Like I said, I, I just, I just would hate, I guess I'm just trying to think about this in a way of like where we've come from, and what, what would it be like as we go forward? Are we going to end up having to be back in the same thing should a new big pot of money come out? And then there's some districts that are at 150% of their, their aid. They're going to get that same allocation and proportion to that, because they've already been overfunded to begin with, you know? And, and yet for us, we just would have to go in and say, hey, we got the short end of the stick again. How do we do that?
Can I suggest a philosophical discussion on this over lunch at the, at the Budget Saturday?
Yeah.
That was the.
So the, the other, the other, the other aspect of what came out of that was the governor's budget proposal
has a polarization of curriculum in it, and basically there was strong resistance to that. Basically, the governor's attempting to prescribe curriculum which really should fall under the purview of the regions. So it was pushed back on those two fronts. I, I will say, what you saw under Governor Cuomo is what's come out in this budget from Governor Hochul, and I think you need to keep your eyes on it. As somebody who watched this closely for 10 years and has worked with a lot of people across the board, watch what's happening right now.
Okay, any other dialogue? I will take a motion to enter into an executive session to discuss a personnel item pertaining to a staff number. Hopefully it'll be brief?
Yes, very brief.
Okay.
Second.
All right, we are in executive session, which is.